Okay, I'd like to follow the order of the senior borough county commissioners, please. Please pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item on our agenda is public comment. This is a time for the public to to make comments to the commissioners about county business. Now, if there's anybody, first I'll ask in the room, and then I'll ask on Zoom. If there's anybody that wants to comment, then I'll go over the rules. If there isn't anybody, then I won't. Is there anybody in the room that would like to make a comment? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to make a comment at this time? Just raise your hand, please.
See anybody?
See anybody?
Okay, now we'll move on to open agenda. Is there anything you have?
I don't think. But I'm very interested to see. I just, not for this meeting, but we would like to add just a short discussion for the work session. Just wanted to give you a heads up just on the ARPA loans that were, that we've originally done. We're looking to redistribute those, but we'll do that as a work session item, but just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
There's something else that... Oh, you got it on here, the letter. The two things that Valerie sent us late, they're on here.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll move on to number four, the consent agenda. Is there any items that the commissioners would like to pull out and discuss separately?
No, I'll just note that for the minutes, I'd had a couple titles I found. I notified Valerie, so she was going to get those.
Yeah, there's a couple titles I still got. Okay, all right, a motion to approve the...
Move so. Confirm approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, next we'll have our public hearing in FY2025 supplemental budget.
Good morning. Kevin, it's finance director. Um, one second, let me get to it here. Okay, so this is a proposed supplemental budget. The items that this supplemental budget addresses. First, you recall the behavioral health deflection grant program. The county's received, actually, when I submitted this, I think we'd received seventy-five thousand dollars. It may have been a subsequent payment since then. And we had originally discussed, I think, when Justin Nelson presented it, that it was going to be, we were just going to be the fiscal agent for the funds. And after the auditors and myself reviewed the grant agreement, the county is actually the recipient of the funds. And so we need to establish a special revenue fund to segregate those and account for them as governmental funds. As such, we need to adopt, or I'm recommending that the board approve this supplemental budget, or consider it, and which creates the Behavior Health Deflection Grant Program Fund and adjusts appropriations to allow us to transfer the deposit, the revenues that we've already received, which have been recorded as revenues in the general fund, from the general fund into this new fund. The second is when we were going through our fiscal year 2024 year-end processes, we identified some opioid abatement revenues that went into an account that we hadn't been monitoring for those revenues. If you recall, in the fiscal 2025 budget, we actually established a separate special revenue fund for those opioid abatement funds, so they could be accounted for separately from all other county funds. And so this supplemental budget adjustment adjusts appropriations to allow us to transfer those remaining dollars in the general fund into the special revenue fund. So essentially, a little bit of cleanup, but we do need to have the appropriations in place to be able to do those inter-fund transfers.
And that fund for the opioid abatement is going to be a long-term fund, right? Like it goes out to like 2033 at least.
Yeah, it'll be as long as there's, so the way that, I think I've defined it in the resolution. Well, we've already established that fund, so that was not being established. But yeah, we'll, we'll maintain that fund until such time that there's no more expected revenues and any revenues that have been received have been utilized for the intended purpose. And then, at which point, we'd abolish that fund. Because of the size and nature of these budget adjustments, a public hearing and supplemental budget and public hearing are required. The transfer of the opioid abatement funds from the general fund to the opioid abatement fund exceeds the ten percent threshold that's allowable for adjustment via resolution. And then, in any, in every case, the creation of a new fund out of cycle with the budget process requires a public hearing, a supplemental budget.
So, question, do we need to do these as two separate resolutions, or can we do them together? I think Justin's online.
He was having a court hearing this morning.
He sent me an email saying that he's online.
He's right.
Thank you very much. I don't see an issue why we can't do these all with one motion, if I'll only describe it in there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so conclude the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Well, first I should ask, is there any, either the commissioners that have conflict, possible conflict of interest on this?
No.
Issue? Okay. With that, we'll open up the public testimony portion of the hearing. And we'll call for, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this supplemental budget? We're getting ready to talk about, anyone online that has, that wants to speak in favor? Is there anybody in the...
Hand raised, Justin.
Does somebody have their hand up there?
Justin.
Oh, Justin, okay. Just identify who you are and...
Justin Nelson.
Yeah, I know, but for the record, he's supposed to, you know.
Thank you. Justin Nelson, here as borough county district attorney. I want to thank the finance department for working, you know, working with us on the deflection program. It's, it's easy, I would say, for departments, honestly, to apply for grants, receive them and be all happy, and we don't have to do the legwork of keeping track of it. So, that is a lot more work. And so I just appreciate that. And something like this, where we just think, hey, let's apply for this grant, it's going to be beneficial. Commissioner Drago also being a part of our deflection team, we talk about this, we say, hey, this is great for borough county. I don't think we think about sometimes the process and steps it takes afterwards of having to do something like this, a hearing for a budget adjustment. And so I just appreciate that work and ask the commissioners to vote in favor of it. We are getting our deflection program working right now. He's had a meeting here recently about it, just last week. So, I just appreciate that work on this and the opioid funds too. Both funding source, I know the CCS has asked about in the past too, the opioid funding and what we'd be doing with those dollars. So, these are important dollars for the county. They're going to help us hopefully try to fight some of the addiction issues we have. I can't say for sure it's going to work, but I think we're going to give it every shot we have. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom that wants to speak in favor? Is there anyone in the room or on Zoom that wants, is opposed, or is just neutral, but wants to make a statement about this supplemental budget? Now's the time to have it on the record, okay? See anybody not?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, with hearing that, I will close the public testimony portion. And the commissioner will make his deliberation and decide it's, what it's going to do.
So I move to approve resolution R-2024-18 and R-2024-20 and adopt this supplemental budgets as proposed.
All second.
Moved in second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? A motion carried. All right, now we move into our business items.
Chair, as I tried to raise my hand before you voted.
Oh, sorry.
Justin, this might be a question for him. I noticed that in the suggested motion, I did put adopt the supplemental budgets, but I did not use the language to modify appropriations as presented. My question would be for Justin, if the motion that was made covers modifying and making the appropriations as well. We typically state adoption of the budget and making appropriations separately.
Yeah, I would actually probably want that separate motion just to make that clear. I know that's one of the aspects here, so we can approve it. But if we wanted to separate motion to, I think as you said, to appropriate as described, or whatever exact wording you need on that, let's maybe do a second motion to include that.
I think it would be make appropriations as presented in resolutions R-2024-18 and R-2024-20.
Did you get that, Valerie?
Sorry, no.
I imagine what's going to happen is someone will say, so moved, but go ahead.
Yeah. So, my suggested language would be a motion to make appropriations, or adjust appropriations as presented in resolutions R-2024-18 and R-2024-20.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, move to second then. Any further determination? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried.
I apologize for...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep us on the straight and narrow.
Okay. With that, then we will now move into business.
Sorry.
First up is six A, Southmore County Senior Matters update, jury.
Morning commissioners.
Morning.
I'm Jerry Cuthbert and the chairman of the Southmore County Senior's matter.
And I'm Linda Kenny, the treasurer of Southmore County Senior Matter.
So, we're here for a couple of reasons. One, to thank the commissioners for their support of what we're doing. And second of all, to report on what has transpired. We were before you, spring of 2023, asking for COVID relief funds so we could start a senior meal project in Hepner. And a lot has happened since then. I think you have that report in your packet. But first thing I wanted to mention is that we're excited to receive an award from OHSU Oregon Office of Rural Health as the 2024 State of Oregon Community Based Organization of the Year. It's pretty exciting. Got down off from the third and then they recognized organization for the work it's done in getting started with our senior meal project and all the things that have transpired since then. And I think a couple of things that led to us getting that award was just the amount of community support, which has frankly been amazing. And you'll see in that paper that we have over a hundred volunteers. They, they come to us from every church in Hepner, every single church, plus Hepner High School. So to have over a hundred volunteers is an amazing thing in this day. And we're really glad for it. They come eager to serve, and that's a great part of what we do. We've also had over fifty speakers. We do more than feed seniors. We provide for them to be connected to resources and also to be informed on things. And so we've had speakers, county government, city government, community-based organizations like Community Counseling Solutions, CAPCO, others, business owners too. And that's been a huge part of what we've done. I think that's, you know, we never have an issue getting speakers. People are glad to come and share with our seniors. And it's worked well to connect them to various things. We've also worked hard at getting grants. We're either funded by borough county and the funds you've given to us, or grants. We've been, we've received grants from numerous organizations, Roundhouse Foundation, Oregon Community Foundation, Amazon, Wildhorse, Lamb Weston. And some of those are just for what we do. Some of them are specific to a program. And we've added to our program. Not only do we feed about seventy on average seniors every week, it's pretty incredible for a little town like Hepner. We also started a senior center in April where we provide classes, exercise classes, other classes for seniors that have been very well attended. We have as many as twenty people coming to our exercise classes. We've done classes on dementia, other classes on aging well. We've done some craft things, and we have other things that we're working to get started too. So that's all pretty exciting. We're governed by six unpaid board members. All of them are active in what we do. They're typically at the senior meal, if they're around. We have three part-time staff, a cook and assistant cook and an activities coordinator that we pay to do what we're doing. Our budget's probably around five thousand dollars a month between the senior meal and the senior center activities. It's been great. It's been amazing, frankly. The community of Hepner in its response to supporting seniors in our program has been nothing short of amazing. And we're very thankful for that, thankful for the commissioners for all that you've done and provided that. Thankful that a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is added to senior centers in your budget. It makes a big difference that we know that we have some baseline funding for the future and what we're doing. And those grants, it's easier to get a grant to do some specific project versus getting a grant for operating funds. And so the fact that that forty thousand for us would be there makes a huge difference when we're planning for the future. We do have other things we're working on. We're working on a digital literacy class. We hope to start in January. We have a grant for a exercise class specific to preventing falls that will be, it's grant-funded, six thousand dollars for Roundhouse. It will be starting in January. We're hoping to do some work on emergency preparedness for seniors. Douglas County did a great program on that. That's something that we are hoping to do ourselves. And so there's a lot of, a lot of things going on. It keeps us very busy. We have a great board. We have a lot of support in the community. And one more thing I wanted to share is, you probably, you're aware, I know that this came up, that we had an issue with the Hy-Vac at St. Patrick's apartment building. And we were going to be unable to meet there, but with the help of the sheriff and Steve Freeland, the emergency management person, and Beth Leslie and Shelley White from, oh, now, Office of Resilience and Emergency Management, all worked together to provide that portable Hy-Vac unit. And because we had that, and there's a letter, a thank you letter in that packet, we were able to, during that period of time, continue with thirty-six exercise classes and serve over eight hundred meals because we did have that portable Hy-Vac to provide for AC. Of course, we don't need it now. Things have cooled down. Having said that, I should mention, I was at a meeting of Hepner Housing. Hepner Housing owns the St. Patrick's apartment building yesterday. And I just want to mention that they have a couple of issues they're dealing with. And that meeting was all of Hepner Housing Board, all that could be there, plus Kim Husworth was there. And John Doherty, the city manager, was there. They have two big issues they're dealing with. One is that their insurance rate increased from eight thousand to thirty-two thousand dollars, which is two thousand dollars a month for them. That's a lot of money for that apartment building for the budget they live on. The other thing that they're dealing with is their property manager that they've had for some time, Meridian, will no longer be doing that at the end of the year. And those two issues are very concerning for them, and obviously, than they would be for us. There's fourteen residents there, all on low-cost housing, and then, of course, all of our activities are there. So, there's conversation about how they're going to resolve those issues. Anyway, that's what I want to say. I want to say thank you. You guys have, in supporting what we do, have made a real difference in the lives of seniors. We have a lot of seniors involved in what we do. And because of those meals and other programs we're doing, they've been benefited. And, you know, the things that really, you know, make me happy is to see seniors gathered together, see them talking with each other, not being isolated socially, finding connection with other people. And, and also, the volunteers, it's just been great to have that many volunteers supporting what we were doing. It's just amazing. Is there any questions you might have for me about what we're doing?
I'd just make a statement that I appreciate your hard work. You know, you've been in this for a long haul, and you're doing a great job, and we appreciate, you know, you can tell you're passionate and mean something to them. We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate the county's support of seniors. And we're really glad to have an opportunity to do that and helping them in various ways. And actually, what we have done has given us opportunities to speak about senior centers and their importance in other venues. I was at a health equity conference in Ontario a couple of weeks ago and was one of the presenters in that about the importance of senior centers. I was at a CAPCO regional meeting about six months ago, talking to other senior center folks about the challenges that we face. And I'm going to be doing a podcast tomorrow, it'll be recorded, Rural Impact Podcast, which is going to be reporting on what we've done and trying to encourage other people and being able to do similar things and trying to help seniors, so. Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Yeah. How is your relationship with CAPCO? I know Tommy did some of the seniors with the senior center here, and this does go back a few years, but it hasn't been the best relationship, but it's going to be better, and then it's deteriorated. So I don't know if it's isolated to them or you're seeing it across.
We just had Stephanie Heaton, she's a director at CAPCO out of Pendleton. She was at our site here recently. We have a great relationship with them. We chose not to be a CAPCO meal site for a variety of reasons. But I communicate with them. There are challenges. They don't have as much funding as they used to have to support that, which is a big challenge. They also have, of course, certain requirements that they have if you're going to do it that way, as far as reporting and stuff that we would, we prefer not to do.
That's the issue that they had here.
Yeah, there's this.
A meal site, and that's really...
Yeah, yeah, it is so much. So we, having said that though, even though we're not a CAPCO meal site, they've been great in including us in conversations about senior meal sites and how we go about such things, so. We're glad for that. And we regularly have CAPCO folks who come and talk to our seniors because they got a lot of programs seniors need to know about. And we've had them, and we are going to have them come and talk about those programs, whether it's energy assistance or whether it's some food provided through commodity boxes or things like that. Part of what we do. Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
ERP system selection process, steps.
It's, no, it's exciting. It's a big project, so. All right. Okay, so we have reached a decision point in the selection process for the ERP system. Before I jump into that, I just want to just acknowledge and bring to the commissioner's attention the amount of collaboration and feedback and input and participation that we've received from county staff, from all the offices and departments, exceeds, has exceeded what we expected originally. And so I understand that everybody's very busy and they have full, you know, workloads and plates and schedules, but they're still, you know, making time to participate to the extent that they can. And, you know, we've, we've made a great effort to make it available for people to participate, provide input and feedback. And we appreciate that, that people have taken time to do that. And I think it's, it's been successful thus far in terms of, you know, collaborating and getting perspectives and input throughout the process, so.
And mostly positive and a lot of pushback, or, you know, people don't like change all the time, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a... Most of, most of the, the input has been more about, you know, you know, hey, this is what we're doing, and how is this going to address this, or this is what we need addressed. And, you know, there's, in terms of, you know, opinions and perspectives on the project overall, yeah, there's, it's a, it's a mixed bag. But there's, I would say, we haven't, I haven't experienced any overwhelming negativity at all from it, so.
Operation is going to make it more successful, so.
Absolutely. So, there's a number of things on this agenda item. And first, we have the Barry Dunn team online here. And they are going to go through a few slides and just kind of give a reminder and overview of what the process has been thus far to arrive at a recommendation and a decision point for the board and provide any level of detail that, additional details that the board would like. So, I think Tammy Warren is going to be the one.
Good morning, Kevin. I'm going to share my screen if that is okay.
Please.
All right, can you confirm that you are able to see the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Well, good morning. I am Tammy Warren. I'm a senior consultant with Barry Dunn. I've met most of you in the room, but just to do a quick reintroduction for myself. I'm the project manager for this project, for the enterprise resource planning needs assessment and selection process. On the line, I do have David Ledbetter, our engagement manager with Barry Dunn, as well as Ryan Doyle, the principal for the project with Barry Dunn as well. And they'll be supporting today and just helping navigate and answer any questions that you may have that come up through the process. So just a quick agenda overview. So we'll really highlight just some of the project background as we approach this project, some of the key milestones. The teams have been doing a lot of work to get to this phase. And then, what work went into the software selection and how the team identified the best software for the county's best interest going forward? And then we'll follow up with just any questions and answers that the group has. So just a quick high level of the project background. And this project came to light, you know, based on just some existing challenges that the county was seeing with, you know, outdated software and systems that really had some restrictions around technology, preventing some efficient workflows. You know, just some unresponsive service delivery, just based on just insufficient training, ongoing support, and some reliance around some of those manual workarounds that were required because of the current systems in place. So the approach was to really come in and do a good current state analysis, see where the county was, what existing softwares were being used, what business processes were being impacted, and then what was the path forward through this process. Through that, the outcome was the county was able to identify a preferred software through a competitive and diligent procurement process that really is hopeful to bring, you know, and address those current state challenges and bring some new efficiencies to the... and bring some new efficiencies to the county as they move forward. So some key milestones that we've worked through, you can see this project really kicked off in January. Um so we have been diligently working through this for the last ten months. Um we started off with some assessments and activities to learn more about the county. Um we gathered some information, um and then we held some informational outreach sessions with vendors to start getting a feel for what the market would offer for new and modern uh software systems. Um then we sat down with the team and we went through a deep dive into what do those functional and technical requirements look like for a future system? What is needed in a new system? Um and then we issued a competitive RFI. Um and then received those responses back from the uh proposed vendors. Um here in a minute, I'll dive into a little bit more about what did that look like and what those responses came through. Um but just to keep moving through the timeline, um in August, we sat down with um the shortlist of vendors to dive a little bit more into what their software provided, go through those demonstrations, um and then conducted some reference checks. Um and then the final evaluations and selections were held in September. And then now we're starting the next process of what does that look like once authorized and approved to shift into contract negotiations. So the software selection um really consisted of really diving into that RFI evaluation. Um then doing a comparative analysis um of those responses that were received. So when the RFI was posted, we did notify over fifty vendors um in, as well as the RFI being published to the county's uh public site. Um with that, we received eight responses back, five which were for for full ERP suites and then three which were for specialized software best-of-breed solutions. Um in that, we took a and created a summary memo that then consolidated down the responses. Um just to give a good comparison, we also did some evaluation team prep sessions before we jumped into those evaluation sessions with the team. There were two rounds of evaluations that were facilitated. Um the first one was focused on the responses and the proposals submitted by the vendors. In that, we coached the team to look for areas around what functionality was offered. What technical components met the county's needs? What was the vendor's approach? And what was the vendor's experience? Um that they brought to the table in their response? Those were all weighted um on a matrix system that were each team evaluation team member then scored. And then that helped, um then we set in a space with a working session with that team to walk through each of the scores that the team members submitted. And then fi- come to an agreement around which vendors would be shortlisted for demonstrations in the next phase of the selection project. Um then we did vendor demonstrations where we held over thirty-five hours of demonstrations where it was open to a larger group that participated in those demonstrations. Um through that process, we also gathered feedback from those participants um through a survey method and provided that back to the evaluation team. Where then the evaluation team had time to digest and gather that information and feedback and take into account their evaluation um through the round two scoring. Um round two scoring was also based off the functionality, technical approach and vendor experience. Um but based on those demonstrations and what they saw throughout those demonstrations and any follow-ups that were conducted. Um through the demonstration, we did prepare um the group. We had um also developed scripts that the vendors were, went through and went by um to help keep those structured and make sure that we were in alignment across the board for all vendors. Um at the close of that, we then conducted the round two evaluation work sessions with the evaluation team. And then identified based on those scores and feedback and evaluations provided back to Barry Dunn, um what that preferred vendor uh would be. So through that process, um the count, the evaluation team identified um two software selections. One would be the ERP suite that was proposed by Univeris. Um through this, Univeris proposed three software solutions um in their suite. One would be the SAP Business By Design, which helps provide tools um for the financials procurement panels, the, that full ERP functionality. They also proposed a PDF software, which is a suite for recruiting and onboarding um in that HR payroll functionality that helps bring more robust um features and functionalities around your HCM solutions. And then they also proposed the Univeris Assets, um formerly known as Asset Finder, which is an asset management solution to help track and plan, uh planning and asset events for even down to uh next generation predictive modeling capabilities. So those were the three that were proposed by Univeris. And then we also identified UNA Solutions as a proposed budget solution um to help uh bring a comprehensive um proposed budgeting software that would then integrate with the Univeris solution. So just some future state benefits that through this process, we've identified that a new, modern ERP system um could provide to the county is really providing that more modernized and enhanced financial operations, helping to automate and integrate some of those key functions, reduce some of the manual and paper-based processes by moving that to electronic, increased workflow options. Um and just helping to, you know, reduce the need to rely on some of that outdated uh processes. I'm also looking to have more robust integrated financial uh processes through um just centralization for, in integrating items like accounts payable, receivable, and having some of that as an electronic workflow opportunity. Um and then just enhancing the budgeting and uh it through advanced budgeting and forecasting tools um in helping for that long-term financial planning. So I know that was a quick overview, but we really wanna spend more time answering your questions and kind of going through um how we can help uh provide more information as in, so I will now hand it over for questions. Um and hand it back to you, Kevin.
Yeah, you may have said it, but I didn't catch it. But when, when, okay, it sounds like you're gonna be able to uh port all the, all our current information in. Sounds like you have some experience in that. When, when uh and that you might have already said, when do you expect the system to be like uh usable, I guess you would say?
Yes, so you, once you kick off implementation, um you're usually, you're looking at a nine-to-twelve month process minimum. Um, you know, depending on the approach that, at the final contract, through the contract negotiations, also depending on resource availability. Um sometimes that could even extend out, you know, a little bit further to the eighteen-month mark. But you're usually looking at a nine-to-twelve month range before the system is up and operating um fully for.
I guess the que- the reason I ask that mainly is we're, we're thinking now about doing some long-range planning. Now, I, I guess I'm kinda thinking of and I should probably wait till it's up and running and then we have our, I hope we're, some of us are included in a little tutorial or something on, on how, you know, the different aspects of this and, and how it might fit into the decision-making of the commission, you know? For instance, we're thinking about, uh we, we are gonna do some long-range uh capital improvement planning. And I know Kevin is gonna let us know if, if this is gonna fail and and so forth like that. I don't know, maybe we should delay that till this gets something. We'll rely on him. I just curious on when i- is, is, just, just out of curiosity, how, how all this might fit into the board of commissioners when we, when we're making decisions and so forth, our decision-making process, you know?
Uh I mean, so in, in terms of a long-range capital plan, um I think, you know, anything that's currently in process or the projects that we're undertaking, you know, those kind of get, get rolled into what that ultimate plan looks like, usually with the assumption that you're, you're going to finish and complete those and it's, or, or it'd be something that's ongoing. Um I don't necessarily feel like there's a strong enough, you know, link between the two. I mean, there's certainly gonna be some tools that are provided that, that would facilitate, you know, what that final product capital plan looks like from a financial perspective, absolutely. Uh but um I don't think that one is necessarily dependent on the other. Does that answer your?
Yeah, yeah, cause then, you know, then the other thing is, I kind of a student of AI and I'm just kinda wondering when you, when your models are, when your model or your AI systems are trained. Uh I'm assuming it's on, is it on government data like ours that you, you know? Uh do, or do you know that? Is that something that? I, I'm just trying to get a feel for, for what, uh, like I said, go back to the same old thing, where would the BOC be able to maybe start thinking about using this for, for different applications, you know?
Uh I think throughout the process, you know, we're certainly gonna be providing information, training, updates. You know, there's a number of, there's, there's functionality that currently is just on, on paper and um, you know, exists on somebody's desk that's gonna be more automated and uh and converted to a, a, a process and a system. Um and, and as we identify that, a lot of this is gonna get identified through the contract negotiation and the statement of work negotiation. There's certainly be um, you know, updates and information provided to not just the board, but um all the county employees that it, it's gonna ultimately affect, so.
Yeah, no, that's good. And, and I guess my last question is, is um our new position that we're getting ready to hire. Does that fit into?
Yes.
I, I, I see you have, uh, you know, what's called, you know, I mean, they're called APIs, right? They, I mean, you, you might be able to use, uh say a federal government might have a, a API or I think that's what they're called, that'll integrate into the system and make our work, you know, easier, yeah.
Yeah, that's, so the, the timing, um it, it's very timely with regard to that, to that position, because as, as you know, there's some of the, the procurement, the processes used to execute and procurements um for the county are not well-defined as we've, as we've kind of seen over the last few, uh over the last few months. Um and as we, as we refine and, and, and implement new processes along with the implementation of this system, the person that, the risk and procurement manager uh position is gonna be integral in helping us stand that up, because obviously there's a, a significant amount of work um collaboration with, with different offices and departments. Um and defining and documenting what those processes ultimately look like and bringing those recommendations to the board. I mean, just, just that piece in and of itself is a, is a, is a big lift and, and the timeliness of hopefully having that, that person on board at the beginning of this process is gonna be very valuable to you know, allow someone to focus on just that element of it.
Good. That's uh my last, last statement. I keep saying my last statement. I, I think this is a real good addition to the county just from my standpoint, what I, I see. I think it enhances what we're trying to do here is uh keep progressive in the county and doing new things. And I think this is a good tool and allows us to be manage assets, uh costs and programs and grants more efficiently. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh I'm, I'm glad to see we're doing this anyway.
I would ask, is this gonna enhance our security by a great deal?
What do you mean by security?
Secure of our, of our IT department, our, you know, like the hostile. Bad actors trying to, you know, get into the county and and we've seen it in other counties in Oregon in the past year and a half and.
Yeah, so these are, they're hosted, it's a hosted solution and um Tammy might be able to speak more. I don't know all the details of the, the security around that, but um what we've asked, so if, if the board recalls, we, we, we're currently working on another project with a, a different Barry Dunn team, and that's the business continuity and disaster recovery for our, our T, our T um infrastructure. Um and that actually came up when, uh as we've been working through this project. And so I've asked the, the, the two teams and Tammy's and, and Aaron on the other team, they're gonna be collaborating to make sure that as we negotiate the, the statement of work in the contract, that we're incorporating some of those best practice security recommendations from the disaster recovery business continuity team uh into, into this uh product selection into this ultimate contract, so. I can't say if it's gonna, I, I can't say, cause I'm, you know, I don't have Jordan here either, so. Um, you know, i- if it's gonna be significantly enhanced from the perspective of, you know, limiting uh outside access into the systems, uh I can tell you that our internally um security and roles and permissions within a system, uh our processes will be uh will have a, definitely be more secure um and allow us to, to kinda segregate some of the functions that need to be separated more um than what we have today, so.
Clarifying what I was going, I realized that we were using Barry Dunn for that aspect as well, so I was hoping they were gonna be collaborating to make this whole process a, a better process.
I, I, I would say that this, the ERP doesn't directly uh tie in with our IT uh security infrastructure. Uh but it will assist with any type of fraud risk, uh because we'll be, uh, you know, hopefully looking at a PO system. So we don't have, uh, you know, uh expenditures that aren't directly accounted for and other things, but wouldn't directly be the IT risk. That's the other contract we have.
But they are working together is what.
Yes. Tammy and I specifically uh talked about that on our, at our, our last update meeting and the same with the project manager on the other project and so. Tammy, if you could just verify that you guys are working together and, and.
Yes, we are. Um and we'll be bringing those two together as we go through that contracting process just to make sure all of that is aligned. Um, you know, as you're going into a new ERP, you're gonna see more maybe some more additional robust functionality around securities that's going to allow to enhance some of that that you may not have at this moment. Again, it is, you know, it'll be um hosted, you know, so that also can add in some additional layers. You know, but I think um being able to incorporate, you know, those findings and that um security initiative that you're doing alongside this is going to be a great way to really set it up in the future for strong security.
I guess maybe asking same question different or expanding upon what Junior was talking about is sort of like a way that the data would be backed up on someplace that'd be different, so that if they were able to breach the system that we have a copy of all the data someplace else that a bad actor couldn't get to.
That's part of those, that's would be in the, the best practices that are being recommended uh by the, the other Barry Dunn team and, and would be hopefully incorporated some, some protocols around data storage and backups and, and availability. Um and then aside from any of the data that would be hosted in, in these systems that we're talking about now, um there's gonna be some recommendations coming from the business continuity disaster recovery plan that are gonna address the data that, that the county um houses and stores. Um and as you know, there's already a number of projects in place to uh make that more robust and add server redundancy. Um and, and we're gonna look at, you know, once that, once the, that project is, is finalized, we'll have a list of things that we're gonna uh evaluate to move forward in order to, to just make sure that we're being as robust as possible without, you know, spending too much money or being overly burdensome, but. Um so yeah, it exists in two different places and, and that's certainly something that's gonna be addressed in terms of the, the contract negotiations.
So the next one is shifting gears just a little bit from that is that know, from someplace else where, you know, they've changed software, you didn't have compatibility between the two. So, you know, I guess that's the first thing that, is we have Universe and then EUNA. And so I would hope that they would be able to speak to each other, because the one is about um budgeting and stuff. Another, it looks like it's your day-to-day operations.
Yep.
And so I just wanna hope that there's compatibility and they play well in the sandbox.
And so I'll um maybe dive a little bit deeper and Tammy, jump in and correct me if I'm, if I go off course here. Uh so just to maybe elaborate on, on who Univeris is. So Univeris is a system integrator. They don't have their own ERP plat- So Univeris is a system integrator. They don't have their own E R P platform that they're, that they're selling, so they're. Uh, they have modules that they've developed and integrated. But, uh, so from that perspective, really what this proposed solution, it's, it's less of, um. Of an off-the-shelf. Organization-wide platform solution and more of a, more on, on the spectrum is more towards a integrated best-of-breed solution. So the E R P system is S A P Business by Design, um, very robust E R P system for financials. And all things related to that. The, um, the H R I S and H C M systems. As for the, the human resources and payroll stuff, um, that's P D S, which is a separate system. And, and Univeris has developed a platform to integrate those. One of the things, um, that they did initially propose and, and they demonstrated was their, uh. Their budgeting, uh, and planning tool, which, you know, their, their particular offering for that Univeris, uh, fell short of. Of what we had, uh, currently, um, you know, Open Gov, they opted not to submit a proposal. That's who we are currently using. And, uh, Una, uh, is, um, is a very functional, very feature-rich, uh, uh, budgeting and planning platform. And we've verified that, uh, Univeris has, uh, no concern, neither does, does Una Solutions. With, uh, being able to integrate, uh, and maintain the functionality of, of their systems, yeah. Um, and then again, there's. You know, this approach, it makes the, the contracting and the implementation maybe a little bit more complicated where we have one. System that's not under Univeris, um, but I feel like we'll be able to manage that. I've done similar implementations before, so.
Like, like I said, just before an accountants program didn't talk to the operations program.
Yeah, no, if we're, if we're selecting different platforms, we, you know, the ability to integrate is, is. Very high priority.
And it sounds like you kind of tested it, so that's what I wanted to hear.
That's the other thing that I was encouraged by is they've done work for government entities and some of them. Not even, oh, around our size. I think some of them are smaller, some of them are bigger. I can't remember, but anyway, that's always encouraging, you know, so.
Yeah.
We're not a test case.
Yeah, yeah, and now in S A P Business by Design, it's not specific for government entity like. You know, some of the other offerings that we looked at such as the, the Tyler Tech, um, offering, um, you know, it's a. It's a very robust and flexible and highly configurable platform, um, that is, is well-suited to, to what our specific needs are.
Yeah, that was, uh, specifically to the system. I see more of the people that are going to put it in. They have experience with government and smaller government. That's what I would think.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions on what Tammy presented?
No, not for me.
So. And I've asked, um, I've asked Barry Dunn to, to stay on the line as, uh, we move through. What my proposed recommended, um, actions are. So if there's any additional questions, but there's, um. Essentially, three different, um, recommended actions and I want to touch on number three first. Um, the. When we did the R F P for consulting services for the E R P selection. Um, we posted that for the entire scope of the project, which included implementation. We selected Barry Dunn, um, but when we contracted, when we executed the contract, there was the, the last project task. Um, was pretty undefined and that was the implementation piece because we didn't know we had what we. And we hadn't done the system assessment, we hadn't selected, uh, preferred systems and didn't really know what that implementation looks like. And so, um, that was included in the R F P, but we wanted to contract for that at a later date. This, uh. Recommended or suggested action, um, included in the packet is, uh, Barry Dunn's proposal. Uh, for the implementation phase of the pro- and project management assistance. There were two, um, scenarios that, that Tammy and I, uh. Discussed and, and what that could look like in terms of assistance with implementation. Um, in scenario one, it was, you know, Barry Dunn provides operational support as, the implementation support as needed. Um, where, um, they're checking in monthly, not, you know, hands-on managing and driving a project forward. Obviously, that's at a substantially lower cost. Um, and option two would have been for, is for what's being recommended and that's full implementation project management. Um, I, uh, realize that it, it's a significant amount of money, uh, for that service. I've done a number of these implementations and I know enough about them to know that, uh, I, I strongly feel that the only. Way that we can have a successful and timely implementation is if we utilize outside resources. Um, who, again, as you mentioned, you know, it's the, the people and their skills. We have a, a team with Barry Dunn. That's, uh, got experience in local governments and, uh, specifically in the state of Oregon. Um, and we really need to lean on that and leverage that as, and, and, and. And take their input on best practices as we. Look at process revisions and, and how workflows should go. Um, you know, I've only been in local government for two. Years, maybe, I don't know, have I been here for two years? Seems like, seems like longer, um. And, you know, we don't know, we don't know and, and the, I can't emphasize enough the, the value of having, uh. That type of resource available for this type of, uh, this type of a project. It's, it's such an impactful thing that, um. Um, I, I strongly feel like that that's a, that's a requisite for success for, for implementation. Um, so that being said, the three, um, actions that I see that we need. Well, number one, uh, would be authorization to post and communicate a notice of intent to award. For the Univeris and Una, um, product solutions that we've described. That would allow us to start the seven-day protest period. And, um, uh, that's required for the size of procurement. Um, following that seven-day protest, protest period and assuming, um. There's no protest that we need to respond to or bring back to the board for consideration. Um, would be to authorize staff to enter into contract negotiations and statement of work development with Univeris and Una. And then third would be to accept the Barry Dunn proposal for the implementation project management assistance and. Enter into the contract negotiations for project task number six. That's what was defined in the original, uh, proposal. That was provided by Barry Dunn.
When you recommended all of them at one time, you don't have any problem with us for doing it?
Yeah, I, I would. Per time's sake, um, yeah, I would, uh, recommend all of those at one time and then obviously we wouldn't start. Uh, contract negotiations and, andations and statement of work development with the vendors until the protest period was ended. Assuming there were no protests that were filed.
Well, yeah, I have confidence in. You and Matt that you'll carry this out well by myself, so.
Well, move to post and communicate notice of intent to award for the Univeris and unit contracts.
I got a second. Then move to second it, improve the discussion, all in favor?
Aight.
All right, all opposed, motion carried, okay. Next one?
Move to enter into contract negotiations and statement of work development with Univeris and.
Second.
Move to second it and improve the discussion, all in favor?
Move to accept the Barry Dunn proposal for implementation, project management assistance and enter into contract negotiations for project task six of their original.
Second.
So move to second it, improve the discussion, all in favor?
Aight.
All opposed, motion carried. As you said, there was a fourth one?
Yep.
Oh, I thought you had added, okay, no worries, that's, okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Right. People set up, I don't.
Oh, there'll be, there will be, uh, there will be significant amount of communications, uh. To all county employees and certainly the board is going to be included on that, so.
Personally, I like this stuff, so that's why.
We'll certainly keep you in the loop.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you, online, Barry Dunn.
Okay, uh, next up we have, uh, C, ratification of twenty twenty-four, twenty-seven collective bargaining agreement. Okay, twenty-four seventy-nine, American Federation of State County municipal employees, Lindsay.
Hi.
Hi.
So I did some, uh, provide a complete packet of the proposed changes, um, in the board packet. But I wanted to give you, uh, just the significant changes highlighted there so you could follow along, make it a little easier. Um, so today we're here to consider the ratification of the, uh, road AFSME contract, uh, for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven. Uh, we started bargaining on May second, um, several months ago. And we reached a tentative agreement with the group at the end of September. Um, then the road, uh, union voted to ratify the contract on October first. And, um, the management team would like to recommend the approval of the contract, uh, for the board of commissioners. And then just to outline the process, uh, won- once both teams have voted approval. Then we would route the final contract to the union who would sign and then I could route it to your office. Um, to get signatures, uh, but we wanted a vote for ratification before we, um, prepare those. That contract for signatures. So in the, um, in the road contract, I'll walk you through some of the most significant changes. Um, some of them were language changes and some of them had some fiscal impact, so I outlined, um, the more significant ones. In, um, article eight, uh, we, um. Bargained a meal allowance for after fourteen hours of work. In article nine, uh, we added Juneteenth as a holiday to the contract and, um. Changed the overtime compensation for employees who work on an actual holiday.
So on that, so when I look at the, um, packet, it's different from what's printed here. But in the packet, it still shows floating holidays is not being struck through.
Um, yeah, so we, the floating holiday has no change.
Okay, because I guess where I was confused is that. Up in the chart, it shows that floating holiday is struck through, so.
Oh, yes, uh, so that was just the, the contract's not perfected yet, um, because. We're the union and the labor attorney and the county are still going through it. Um, but basically what happened there is the union rep had added the floating holiday up above and we had said, let's. Keep that separate down below because it's not actually a recognized holiday. It's more of an additional day. So there's no material changes there. It was just, um, where it went in the contract, the placement. Yeah. Uh, good question. And then article eleven, vacations, um, we did implement a cash-out rollover option. For, uh, vacation P T O, so those that are, of course, they're kept, um, can have the option. Once a year to, uh, cash that out. Bring their balance down to a manageable, um, balance. Article fourteen, compensation, we implemented a, um, wage schedule based on a C P I. So the floor, uh, would be a two percent and the ceiling would be a five percent. And that would be based on the last twelve months' average C P I, um. Through the, um, U S city average for all urban consumers. Through the Bureau Labor of Stat- Statistics. So for this year, for July first, um, that would be already set at three point four percent. Which is what, uh, our non-union group and our sheriff's office group got as well.
So, yeah, I had a question on that. So how, when we did our wage compensation package, that, is this all aligned with what we did? That or is this above and beyond?
So this is a cost of living increase, so it's applied to our wage schedules that were implemented during our wage study. Um, article fifteen, overtime, we increased the emergency call-out to double time. To try to incentivize, um, employees to take that emergency call-out. Um, uh, this is a major one, uh, but on article eighteen, insurance and retirement. We, um, have changed the, for members hired after July first, twenty twenty. That were on the defined contribution plan to PERS, which is a defined benefit plan pension. Um, so we thought it was more equivalent, uh, to what our employees were on, um, that were hired before twenty twenty. That's a, that's a huge benefit there.
Well, I was that we're between when, uh, July one, twenty twenty and when this is, will all be moved to PERS?
Yes, yep.
I assume that's the case, but.
Yeah, we don't have a set date on that yet, um, we just have a mutual understanding with the union that as soon as. Um, this contract is ratified, we'll get to work, um, with PERS on, um, implementing that.
We'll be looking to do the same with the, uh, non-union, so.
Uh, section seven, we, uh, offered a voluntary flex spending account, so that would be employee, um. Contributions to that. It's, um, the opportunity to contribute, uh, pre-tax earnings to a, a medical spending account. Then article nineteen, under general provisions, we, um. Increase the allowance for work boots and prescription safety glasses for those positions that are required to have safety glasses. And I would say that would be the bulk of the, um, significant changes within the contract. Do you have any questions on those?
Move the other note that I added, just going back to the holiday pay. When I read it, I guess I'm not clear, so. Because to be paid at the rate of time and a half, the regular hour delay for all hours work in addition to the holiday pay. So do you get your regular pay plus time and a half or is it just time and a half?
Yeah, so, um, if, if it's, let's say it's Christmas, the person, um, gets their. So in the roads, they're on ten-hour shifts, so they'd get ten hours of holiday pay. And then if they're called in to work for two hours, they would get two hours at time and a half in addition to their ten hours of straight pay.
Okay, so your work rate is double time and a half.
That's what I thought, yes.
Double time and a half, if you don't work, you get straight pay.
Okay.
And this is on, only on the actual holidays?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good incentive to get people, it's tough to get people to work a holiday, right?
Yeah, and.
The only way you can incentivize this.
Yeah, and it's, it's a rare occurrence, um, but when we need it, we need it, so if it's plowing or on Christmas.
Didn't have a problem with that. I just wanted to make sure I understood how it read.
Okay.
Didn't have a problem.
We're due for snowmageddon in one of these days.
Some of the crew is.
No. Maybe they'll all be in March.
Yeah.
Later and later, the snow days. Um, yeah, so, uh, the management team that worked on this, um. Myself, Matt, Kevin and Eric, I'm, um, we all, um, recommended to move this forward. Ratify the contract. Sir, any questions that I can answer for you?
So I'll make a motion to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between Marl County and the Marl County Road Department and AFSME Local Two Four Seven. Second.
Move to second it and improve the discussion. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Finally, we got, we got through audit field work, so I had, I had time to actually get some other work done. All right, so, um. And so historically, when we do, when we have budget adjustments, we just kind of put them all together in one, then it's supplemental budget with a public hearing and all that. Um, just, uh, in order to keep them a little bit. Straighter, um, and, and more. straighter um and, and more organized, um I've uh kind of separated the two, so anything that requires by statute, local budget law, a public hearing, um, I'll be doing separately, these uh budget adjustments don't require a full supplemental budget process, they can be uh adjusted via a resolution um because they don't exceed uh any of the thresholds or, or meet any of the requirements. Need to do so, they're really just, uh, two of them are transfers of appropriations and uh, the other one is an increase of appropriations, but that increase is offset by a specific restricted resource that can only be used for that purpose, and those adjustments can be done via a resolution um adjustment versus having to do a, a full supplemental budget process. So, um, a little bit of catch-up work. Um, resolution twenty twenty two zero two four dash one nine uh is a transfer of appropriations, and this is related to the weed department. Um, it's a transfer from general operating contingency in the general fund uh into the weed department, and it covers uh the amounts that were provided by the weed department manager related to the costs of the building lease, utilities, and expenditures for expenditures for fixtures and equipment needed to commence weed department operations from that new location. Um, resolution twenty twenty four dash two one, uh, transfer appropriations from general operating contingency in the general fund to the finance department. Uh, and that is for the creation of the risk and procurement manager position that was authorized uh at one of the last board of commissioners meetings, I feel, was it the last one? Oh. I'm fine. And then uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty two is an increase of appropriations for specific use grant. Um, this was the um emergency management um um homeland's security grant program um for the audiovisual upgrades in the primary EOC, which is the upper meeting room in the Bartholomew Building in Hepner. Um, this grant, this is an old grant award, um, and we've just now gotten uh, you know, moved forward on the project. Um, and uh, for whatever reason, this was not included in uh, in the budget uh when it was prepared for fiscal twenty twenty five. There's offsetting revenue to cover the expenditures, as you can see in the details below. Any questions?
I don't.
Well, if they're going to.
No.
Ten motions.
Sure. I'm going to approve resolutions R dash two zero two four dash one nine, R dash two zero two four dash two one, and R dash two zero two four dash two two to make state adjustments to the FY twenty twenty five budget and appropriations as detailed therein. Second.
Is that twenty nine or nineteen, did you say?
Nineteen, twenty one.
Oh, I thought you said twenty nine, I just want to make sure Valerie gets it, okay, nineteen, okay. Uh, okay, move to the second, any further discussion? Okay.
Aye.
All right, all those, got a motion third, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next up is uh the county account, uh, the rejection of claim.
And so this item um invoice came to finance office for processing and review and audit uh determined that it did not meet the process requirements outlined in our procurement ordinance. Um, as such, I can authorize that by statute um for payment. Um, I've included the details uh in my letter written to the board, I would add that I don't feel like there was any uh willful wantonness or disregard or anything, I think it was a, it's a process oversight and uh any, all the employees that were involved with it have been um informed and, and have spent time kind of walking through the process and the relevant parts of the uh procurement ordinance. And uh, outside of that, uh, and outside of the fact that it, it didn't uh fall directly in our procurement process, uh, I don't have any concerns about the legitimacy of, of the claim. If um the board does uh authorize payment, there's a um another budget resolution, and this is simply a transfer of appropriations from materials and services into capital outlay. This type of expenditure um is a, is a capital improvement to an asset, um, not a maintenance item, uh, so, and that's just a, a nerdy accounting thing, um, no net impact on the budget for the, for the parks department in that regard. So if the, if the board authorizes payment, then I would ask the board to consider, you know, approving the resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty three.
So when I read through this, I kind of see, I understand how it happened, when you buy, you buy a vehicle from a individual and uh, you know, and, and I think we buy most of our, our uh off-road vehicles from, from the same vendor, and that's probably who you're going to take it back to, to have it worked on, I think he was just taking it to get it worked on, it turned into more than he thought. I, I get where this happened, don't have an issue with how it went down, other than I think that once we get our new position filled, this will stop things like this from happening, it's not, just another example of why it's important to have a risk management procurement guy there, so. That's what I have to say. So I kind of, you know, echoing what you're saying, saying it a different way, so I guess walk me through, because uh way I read the invoices that they took it in there, it's overheating, hey, check it out, you know, hopefully it's just a water pump or a stuck thermostat or something that get into it. Oh, crap, it's going to take a um new engine, so what is the process then for them? Because going in, they didn't need to go get three bids, but once they open up the can of worms and is that when they?
Yeah, there's actually a specific provision in the procurement ordinance for, for that circumstance. Um, and it's uh repairs to personal property, I think, is the, is the item that it refers to, and it's where a piece of equipment or a vehicle needs to go in for, you know, there's something wrong, we don't know what it is.
Yeah, right.
And, well, you know, you get into it, you've got, you know, ten hours or whatever of diagnostic time into it, and so, you know, some shop supplies, and you determine, oh, well, now I've got to replace the motor. Well, I mean, does it really make sense then to go get three quotes from other people and uh go pick up your UTV that doesn't have a motor in it and take it somewhere else? I mean, that's, that's ridiculous, right? Uh, and that's, that's not what's intended, and that's why there's an exception for the, in, in the procurement policy. Uh, where this fell short was it's, as, as it's uh identi- as it's written in the procurement ordinances, that's a, that's a county administrator call, um, and, and uh he has the ability to circumvent the competitive to authorize that type of expenditure, whereas over the threshold and circumventing or bypassing the competitive process. Um, and in this case, it just wasn't brought to him before the, the commitment and expenditure was made, so liability was incurred.
Just reiterating, I think what you're saying is that it happened, and I'm assuming in this case, bragged with, hey, Matt, um, we didn't think this, this major, it's going to take a new engine, and Matt goes, it's the details, and then authorizes it, and moves forward, and then we wouldn't be here today.
Yep.
Okay. So, they thought they'd done it right, kind of figured, but they, they did miss that, they've been uh, we've instructed them otherwise for any future. And, and quite frankly, the only reason, main reason why it was uh a priority was this was the uh side-by-side that they have equipped for responding in to any dry lightning strikes on the park area, and this was right during the fires that needed to be done. And so they just, they're like, we got to do this, and so uh we missed a call, uh, but by, by our ordinance, we need to bring it to you.
Well, I, you know, I, I like that the, the people involved know what, what, you know, what, because I think it's just one more step in us, just getting in the habit of good practices, you know, in the county.
Yeah.
And that, that's, that's a lot of what seems like we're doing here, is just getting in the habit of doing it.
Okay. Making sure everybody's following the proper procedures.
Yeah, I just kind of get in that, you know. Plus you have a, a system where it, you know, like you just described, it doesn't get ridiculous, you know, and we're able to do that, you know. And I would say, if we ever run into the multiple areas, and I'm sure Matt will, is bring to us changes in policy or something that would, you know, smooth this out, so we're not being, you know, ridiculous.
Right.
Yeah, that's the procedures, yeah. But we want things to run smoothly, okay.
I'll move our approval, resolution number R dash two zero two four dash two three.
And.
There a second?
Well, not yet.
I would maybe authorize payment of the.
An authorized payment of the invoice, Marl County Greenberg's. I'll second that.
Here the seconded. Uh, any further discussion, any favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed, motion three.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Kevin.
Next up is, discuss our vendor meeting schedule, Valerie.
Um, essentially, so the second meeting of November falls um when commissioners and some staff members will be out of town for the Association of Oregon County's annual conference, and I just need to know if you guys would like to reschedule the meeting or cancel it and just wait until the first December meeting.
Did we do last year? I was thinking the exact same thing. We canceled it and, yeah.
In the past, uh, the Board of Commissioners would have a short meeting, but that was when they had to uh, they were set up to approve all, all expenditures.
All payables.
And so as we, as that was changed when this BOC came in, there hasn't been that, that uh operational need to just have a fifteen-minute remote meeting to.
So I guess my question would be, do we have anything in that timeframe that needs to be addressed before we do cancel this meeting, because I mean, we could.
Well, I guess if something comes up, we can schedule a special meeting.
And just plan on that?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm comfortable with what we did last year.
We'll cancel one, leave it up to Matt, if there's a need for a special meeting. We'll figure it out.
Very good. Thank you.
The uh we have some work, you know, the decision of those half indicator light replacements?
Yeah, I Sandy Pointer, Marl County Public Works, I have Mark Haggardorn on the line or on Zoom. If he wants to speak up and say something, he probably is okay for now, I'll try to ramble on, but what the issue is, is we have CIP, Critical Investment um Funding, coming to the airport twenty twenty five, twenty six year. And um part of that is to incorporate these Pappy lights, the precision approach, something, something, something. So, um, what's happened is back in twenty one, we had a inspection when we had them installed, and the Pappys are tilted wrong, and they're outdated, antiquated, not repairing them, we're not fixing, we're not able to get it the angle right. So what um Century West Engineering is recommending, and we need to have Pappy lights, is to get these done and taken care of, well, with that tilt wrong, we need to get that handled. Well, now, Federal Aviation is saying we need to have a cultural study done to the area. We've had one um ten years ago, but they want an update, so we're, we're deemed to get that update. What's happening with ordering these cultural studies is we're taking eight, I'm saying eight months to almost a year before we can even get this done. I need to get this project started now before I can get this grant started, is that correct, Mark?
He's muted.
Is he muted?
Man, may I be Mark? Sorry. Go ahead, Mark.
There you go, yeah, Mark Haggardorn, Century West Engineering, uh, thanks for letting me join. Um, yes, this is a FAA is now requiring through Oregon State Historic Preservation Office an environmental study for any off-pavement work, so this is something new moving forward uh that we're going to be working through. And so this is a change as of about a month ago, so I've worked with Sandy to quickly get this environmental scope together so we can stay on track with our typical CIP projects at the airport that we have planned.
This will, I, I need to get that approval for that from you, and I think it's just an okay, no money or anything's going to be switched around. It's just getting this project jumped a little bit. And then I sent you an email of that agreement with Century West, their sub is the um.
Yeah, archaeology, archaeological sub.
Yeah. But caveat to this is with the Business Oregon Grant, where I was trying to get pads poured for the PCC, I have to have an archaeological study for that now. So I'm talking to Business Oregon to see if, okay, if I get these guys coming out for this project, the FAA uh extending of the taxiway, can I maybe have them do the study for the pads, I don't know if I get a discount, or I'm doing two for one, but get that, uh, get that all done at the same time.
Can you have the whole airport done at once?
I, yes, but I think they have to break it up, we're each in a little project, so I'm just, I'm trying to swindle a deal, I don't know if that'll happen, but um, that's, I know later on, we're going to come to, I got to get this Business Oregon Grant done and completed, so it's kind of hit us try, a hard rock and a hard place to try and get that. Ten years, sounds like, that's the last one I had, ten years.
And it's, it's even more, it's even more than that now, so they're good for ten years, but they're only good for an area where they investigate. So it's a great idea, Commissioner, to do the entire airport, that would be cost prohibitive, and we only do about four or five projects on the airport in ten years, um, so there wouldn't be enough value, really, um, to do it then, and then it would expire and you'd have to do it again, unfortunately.
See how, I want it out, why it has a ten-year expiration, I mean, you want to add things to it?
You never know.
New veins come up.
What happened to so-and-so? No, no.
Yeah.
I wondered the same thing, when, when he first talked and contacted me about it, I thought, what, really? Well, we stirred up enough dust to find something.
Did you still have something to ask, Kevin?
Uh, yeah, so, um, I was unclear on, you said no, no money changing hands and whatnot, and so is this for, is this the contract for the cultural resource study to be completed? Um, and that does create, you know, a liability from a financial perspective, and my concern was, is there's no funding for this in the airport fund.
Right. We won't have to, we'll get billed for it later, we'll get a reimbursement from that Federal Aviation Grant. But it won't hap- he can talk, he may, I think he's muted.
No, unmute again, Mark. Go ahead, Mark.
Yes, all this work is going to be uh fully reimbursable through the FAA at ninety-five percent. Now, the issue with these new environmental scopes that we have to do whenever we're breaking new ground is that has to be done before we can complete our design, and we can't get the grant until we complete our design, so the county's going to have to hold these environmental costs, carry these environmental costs for six to nine months until that grant is issued. Um, but again, yes, these, the grant is, all these costs are reimbursable at ninety-five percent.
Right, um, and I guess so that, that was, so my concern was, there's, there's not, there's not adequate funds available um even to the budget adjustment within the airport fund, uh, we could consider doing like an inter-fund loan um from the general funds, but there's a, there's a budgetary aspect that I think is to be considered.
Well, and that's where I, I mentioned the Business Oregon, if I can get that to come through, I have that remainder in that Business Oregon Fund to do that, isn't that what we discussed, Mark, that?
Correct, yeah, the, the amount of funds you have in the Business Oregon Grant are more than enough for the environmental component of this project.
But again, I have to come up with the money first, then ask for reimbursement, so I guess what you're saying, I still would have to have that. Or uh.
So what?
You go.
Who, what's the timeline to where we actually start earning some costs? I'm not, not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand so we can make sure that we're covered from a budgetary perspective.
Yeah, we've, we've spoken with Sandy, and um I think we can, we can kind of hold our costs until January. Yeah, we've, we've spoken with Sandy and um I think we can, we can kind of hold our costs until January. Um, and not start uh invoicing or requesting reimbursement until January uh, cause we, we know this is a last minute issue. Um, we're uh, we're hoping to get the contract executed uh today. Uh, that's why Sandy pushed through uh this to get in front of you. That way we can get our uh sub cut loose so we can make the January deadline of having all this environmental stuff completed. But yes, uh, we can hold our costs until January.
Okay. I think, yeah, I think we can work through that. I just wanted to clarify.
He just doesn't have time to be able to get back in front of us.
Yeah, we just need to plan in place, that's all.
Another question?
Can I just rely on them to know that they're doing what I know?
This is an added little hiccup that I honestly, it's been a while before it's happened. And I have a feeling this is gonna happen a lot with a lot of things, not just, I'm looking at the park too. I know I'm not part of the Parks Department anymore, but anytime they're gonna have a grant, I'm sure they're gonna have to have some studies done.
So the state's just putting more.
I think we're good. Yeah, yeah. It's coming.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to.
Well, yeah.
I would suggest.
Nope. So I'll make a motion to accept the work from Century West Engineering for the anticipation of the F Y two five design.
Yeah, and there's a form that you got emailed that they just need to.
So I'll second.
Uh, they moved it seconded. In case of special.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's leading me in too.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'll let you know if they find something.
It's too urgent to be able to call a five minute recess. Okay, so we're meeting back to order. And the next item is stage administrator evaluation process. Jeffrey and Wilson. And Matthew.
Yeah. So um, I, I'll kick it off here is that, so Matt and Lindsay were meeting, talking about um proposals from people to do this. And kind of the question came up as to um what we wanted to do to do a mini three sixty process where involves input from the um department heads or just in the uh commissioners themselves doing the input. You know, answering the questions and doing the evaluation of Matt. And I guess a little more explanation of the three sixty that they would um write comments or something. But ultimately, we would still be the ones doing the evaluations, just for getting input from other sources. And I said, well, I know what I have done at other organizations and it's been just the board did it. But um, I wanted your guys' input in it too. So that's why it was brought to you guys to see what your preference was.
Yeah, well, on this one, I'm just gonna lean on your judgment because like I said, you, you've had experience in this, you know? And uh, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with what you, your gut feeling tells us the best way to go, because.
Did you hear any input from them?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not against having input from department heads or any of that if they wanted to do written. Um, but you know, again, I, I'm good with it either way.
Like I say, the, the two large organizations I've been involved with, it's always been just the board. And and I think that, you know, in our case with the county, that a lot of us know who the department heads are. And so I think that we can have a feeling as to maybe their sense of how Matt's working with everybody. So my preference would be to, it's just a board process.
That's good.
Because, you know, I, for me also it comes back to is that that he is our one employee.
Yes.
And you know, it's up to us to do the evaluation of Matt.
Right.
I agree with that. We have checked in with a couple consultants. We asked them, do you provide pricing either way? So uh, with the, with the commission's direction, we'll finalize that and get that going.
Okay, that's still on the table, right? Or still, you're still considering or you're gonna go that route?
Um, so we're gonna have, we were gonna have an consultant. Whether their way, it's just what their scope of work would be.
Yeah.
And so now, you know, with your guys' input, like again, I wanted you guys to have input on this. So we will be going with a facilitator or consultant to help us formulate questions and evaluation criteria format. And then start the process.
Yeah.
It's good to me.
And if we don't like it, next year we can change it, so.
I like that. Thank you. It's got a little trap door there.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have your direction?
I, we have our consensus.
All right.
And just, you know, earlier this morning it started, I handed both of you a sample of uh the um form and the process that we use at U E C. So right, you can have an idea of what it is that.
Right.
You might have some.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And that, again, that's just a sample of what's used at one place.
Right. Okay, well, thank you. Let's move forward. Uh, okay, next up is the I G A for the Water Consortium. Go ahead, Matt. Do you wanna go ahead and kind of give them an update of what we've been doing and where we're headed and all this good stuff on that?
Um, sure. Um, so we have been going through the I G A as far as um um, working through with the legal counsel on that. This draft that you have is, is where we're um, we're looking at it. Um, a lot of our discussion has been about the Board of Directors. Right now, what we'd like to do is uh kind of settle on the Board of Directors being representatives from both the port and the, the county only, having two representatives from each on there. And then having it so that uh this board can appoint an advisory committee, which would uh also include the cities. And so um, you know, having a representative of the city to be able to vote in on and provide advisory, but then the board reserves right uh specific rights. Reason why we wanna look at the doing that is of course uh Boardman and Irigan are both going to be uh stakeholders in that and, and connecting to municipal systems. We believe they should be involved in that. But not necessarily make them a financial contributor on that and keep that, uh, keep that, that reserve for the county and the uh port in order to maintain control on that and maintain direction on, on what we're going, as well as the fact that this uh this entity will be dealing with issues that go beyond what the uh City of Boardman and City of Irigan will uh will be involved with. So that's, that's kind of the gist that we have on that. As we go through, of course, um as originally uh reviewed, we're looking at it at an up to sixty thousand dollar contribution from each of those main board members uh to help facilitate this. At this time, the county would provide the staffing. Um, and so that would be me as a managing uh director and then having uh the county act as a fiscal agent. So we'd have Kevin involved, myself, and then of course, the two members that would be representing the county elected official and one staff member.
Valerie.
And Valerie would help support with meetings and that. Uh, we'd be looking to meet uh initially at least uh every other month as we go through and review these kind of things, uh chase grants. Uh, the hundred and twenty thousand dollars would allow us to pull in consulting and uh grant preparation, hopefully get this thing rolling and, and getting more items uh coming through. Um, I, you know, if there's uh, we think would be pretty well positioned in order to, especially as the county is acting, acting as fiscal agent, to position ourselves for uh for granite, grant opportunities as well as for uh for requests for congressional directed spending and other, other type of items in that way. So um overall, um it will concentrate on the clean water initiative. So just to be, to be clear, we're looking at addressing nitrates in the, in the aquifer. Um, and more of, more actually making sure we're delivering clean drinking water to the residents that are in the Lebohama area. So we aren't looking at recharge projects initially. We're just looking at delivering clean water to, to the residents uh in Morrow County. And so we're hoping to do this. We bounce this off of uh port. Um, the executive team there, uh they seem very open to it. Uh, they have it reviewing their uh with their attorneys. Uh, we'd like to get it with you. So as we go to them, if you have any questions, your concerns, we could, might be able to get those changed before, before they review it. So anything I missed, Chair?
No, that, you just mentioned why, why we had it in the, in this week. That's why you nailed it there is because we, we wanted to kinda there's, they're reviewing it now and I wanted you guys to review it. We did. And then if there's any changes to kind of do them all at one time, bring them back to you. You know, for approval and be able to take it right to the port and have both groups already kind of pre-approved. So that's why you're looking at it today.
And, and clarification for, for this is that this is more about provisions of safe drinking water and not nitrate reduction.
Yes.
Cause the state plan is gonna trump everything we're doing in that anyway. Uh, at this point, so we don't really wanna get our cart ahead of the horse. So focus of this is for providing clean drinking.
Yes, this is, as Chair Sykes would say, this is that, that mid-area solutions. And so uh, that's, that's what we're looking for.
So with that out there, did you get a chance to read it?
I did. So the question I have is that um how important is it the I G A and the bylaws agree? Because like on the meetings, uh, the I G A talks about, like you said, six times a year, no less than six times a year in the bylaws says as needed or something like that.
Yeah.
You know, and I don't know if at some point, six times a year is more than you need, or I guess I prefer the language of as needed or something, but.
Justin's up there.
Correct. And I, this is one of the reasons to come in. I, I would want the bylaws and I G A to match. And so uh, that we did discuss the meetings, I think one of our um team meetings, not with the boards, with um counsel, Matt and Chair Sykes discussed the meetings. And I think at first it was gonna be more meetings and then I think we changed it to um, a set number of meetings per, I forgot the right term, but if the bylaw should be changed to at least match what the I G A says. Now, we may decide we want it to be as needed or set times. I think our team discussion was trying to meet more on a regular basis. Was it, it didn't get forgotten about? I don't recall, maybe Chair Sykes, you guys remember better, but in short, we want those two to match. So we'll to double check that. But it is um, the number of meetings was discussed. I think we came to an agreement on those, but we're still waiting to hear back. Maybe the port might have different options or ideas also on that. So I'm, I'm making notes right now also for changes or comments um that we can go over.
Also, the three point three point three uh talks about uh adopting the bylaws after the I G is taken care of. So within ninety days. So if we needed to tweak anything there, these bylaws, I believe, were uh, were offered as a sample of those. So the parties would be adopting those after the I G A would be in place.
So then um page two ninety-six, it must be in the bylaws, three point two, the special meetings. Um, I don't think the timeframe agreed with the I G A on how many hours before special meeting could be called.
Okay.
Have you got that, Justin, or do you want?
I do. I'm, yep, I'm doing it right now. Putting those notes around in the file.
Anything else? Just see it there, but.
In my note, so um, there's page two ninety-six of the packet, two point eight removal. So yes, just clarification, a member may be removed with or without cause only by unanimous decision of the governing bodies of Morrow County and the Port of Morrow. I guess when I read that, that might mean it'd have to be both entities, but shouldn't it be the entity that appointed them or something like that?
Are we talking about a member of the board?
Yes.
And that's in the bylaws, not in the I G A, correct?
I couldn't remember them.
Yeah, it's in the bylaws.
Okay. It's not, it's not to remove it already, okay. Yeah, that should, that should, it should move both votes to remove somebody from the board.
The, the way, you know, just the way I read it, but.
Did you get that, Justin?
You were person, Dave. We'd have to have us and the port both removed unanimously, so.
No, we don't want that. I, I, I miss that. I've read this thing about ten times and stuff. So Justin, did you get that?
I do. Uh, my understanding would be that if it's the idea that both the boards or both governing bodies need to approve removal, that's not what's intended. It's that each entity is able to select their representatives on there. Is that the idea?
Exactly. The intent is that each entity selects their own representatives and, and they can remove them and replace them at their will.
Yeah.
So we don't have to rely on.
Nobody else.
Nope.
But also I would encourage, once you have time, if you're looking over more, think about it, feel free to email me, Matt, uh with other requested comments or changes or concerns. Um, like we said, it's still being looked at even right now by the port. So we still have plenty of time.
And, and once we approve the I G A, we have ninety days to change the bylaws. So do I understand that correctly?
I believe that's what it is currently. That's right.
Okay.
Okay. So yeah, like I said, I kind of wanna, we wanted both, you know, the port to look at it with their attorney and then have you guys look at it, Justin, and then kind of have them come together. So it's not a back and forth, because they meet once a month and we're not gonna meet but once in November, so kinda wanna move it along a little bit, so. Okay. That's all we had on that. No action. Okay. All right, next up with the J, consideration of a letter of support for the Port of Morrow D E Q wastewater permit modification. Let's see, Jeff.
So I attended the D E Q hearing about the permit modification for the Port of Morrow, the wastewater application. And then afterwards, I had another meeting with Matt and as mentioned, we, we want to consider a letter. And so I think I suggested, well, I guess I could reach out to the port and see if they would like one. And so I reached out to Lisa and she said, yes, she would appreciate a letter of support from us. And there was something that was crafted and then Matt says that he ran it by Dan Kearns, our land use attorney. And in front of you's the modified letter because we could be the, the county, you'd be a regulatory entity. So he wants to make sure that.
And just to give credit, uh, Tamra uh actually prepared the initial letter and, and bounced it off Dan just uh because of the attention that might come to this matter, make sure we're, we're good on our letter of support. We will have uh some regulatory power as that permit comes through. So we wanna make sure we're approving the right supporting the right things that we don't stumble over ourselves and do it.
I would say I was at the D E Q uh public meeting and most, most everybody there was in support of the letter as well. It was very few opposition and.
So I'd move for approval and signing of the letter in support of the ports on that modification of D E Q. I'll second that.
We've been seconded for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Carry. Okay.
And we will uh get that on letter and have that available at the meeting.
That concludes our business items. Now we're gonna move to our department reports and uh seven A Veteran Services where we report. There she is.
And Vincent, you can come sit by her so she doesn't feel alone. I know she's pretty tough, but it's her first.
Moral support from way back there.
You had her back.
Yes, I did.
The best with her, you gotta deal with that.
Good morning. My name's Amanda Kendrick. I am the new veteran service officer here. I think I'm right at two months now. Um, so a Tosh in your pocket, I put our quarterly report in there. This is the same quarterly report that I report to um the Oregon Department of Veteran Affairs. And I will just say it's for July, August and September. So half of it I was not here for. So I'll do my best to um, just go through this with you. Um, I was pretty happy actually with the numbers of interviews that I've done in office since I've been here. Um, we are at forty-two for the quarter. These numbers down here on claims, appeals and benefits awards are obviously extremely low. Um, amounts that we've brought into the county is at zero because unfortunately there was. Um, amounts that we've brought into the county is at zero, because unfortunately, there was just no one here, you know, and I. I was not able to file claims until just a few weeks ago. So those numbers will be going up next time. Uh, the next bottom section is kind of just a list of the outreach that I've done and how many people we estimate that I've. Been in contact with at those events. I made that a pretty high priority when I first started to let um. Just the county know that we have someone back here in the office that can help them out. Unfortunately, at the time, we had to send some people over to Umatilla County, trying to get those veterans to come back to our county. Um, for the services that they need. The second page is um a list of just other things that we do as well besides just filling out claims. And helping them with paperwork, et cetera, um referrals that we do, um random questions that we get asked. Encouraging people on to apply for um medical benefits, things that we don't particularly do in our office. But we try to refer them to where they need to go to get the services that they do need. Uh, it's attached of meetings that I attend. Um, that's also just outreach, getting my name out there. And trainings that we attended this month. So I was pretty happy. We got everything filled. No empty spaces this quarter. That's just a brief overview. Do you have any questions for me?
No questions, but just um, maybe it's a little late, but welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You're here and helping the veterans of the community.
I appreciate that. I very much enjoyed it. It's something that is very meaningful to me. Um, and it's been great. Talking to these veterans and the the warm welcome I've received has been great from the communities.
Thank you.
So I I also want to mention that she's done extremely well reaching out to the community, not just to veterans. She's uh done a lot of networking, both in the north part of the county as well as in the south. And so she's really getting herself out there, getting herself to be known into the community. So I really commend her for for doing that. I appreciate everything she's doing.
Thank you. I, you met with Jerry Conklin earlier this morning as well from the South Morrell County Seniors Matter. I'm doing a lot of work with him. To get something started in Hepner as well. We're specifically looking for setting up a lunch similar to what we do. Here in Aragon already, where we do um what we call our coffee time. It's the social hour for the veterans to come in and we just provide coffee and refreshments and. You know, just get that socialization for them, and we're looking to start that in Hepner as well.
Yep, with the test to it, she's been down in South County, we've been a couple times, very, very outgoing of the public, and that's really important, so. Glad to see you doing that. Okay. Okay, well, thank you for that report. Okay, Justice Court.
Moral support. I guess he's just gonna get my back.
Well, good morning. So I've uh prepared my report. I gave a copy. I'm here to answer any questions you have. I did want to interrate um. Again, with the, we're still dealing with the issues with the Polycom, but our IT staff have been phenomenal. They're coming up. The problem is, it's um, last week I had an arraignment I need to do over the Polycom, so. My T came up here to experience firsthand the issues we have, but wouldn't you know, it worked perfect. Um, the very next day, we needed to use it and didn't work, so. But um, I I think we're getting closer and closer to getting that part of it figured out. It's one of the deals when you deal with computers and everything else, you've got to kind of be there and wait for it to to happen to get it going. Um, with that program we set up, I made note of again here. Um, for getting people with their driver's licenses, I reported to you that um, at the time of this report, we were up to forty-two. Uh, people that were either suspended or no operator license that are now licensed legal drivers. I'm after report today, two more. So um, the program seems to really be be working. Um, I find a, I think that's an absolute win-win for. For everybody to give them to be licensed legal drivers and which means then they can be insured drivers. And protect everybody. I think that's just a win for the for the county and our citizens. Stuff, um, I reported that I'd been to a to the con- to a conference and my clerk just got back. Um, the clerks conferences, they they set those up so that they don't interfere with the judicial days as much. So she had to head down on Saturday and her conference started on Sunday, so she was through there and everything else. One of the things that's coming up is um. Where it's nice is that we're learning about legal updates and things like that to keep us out of the fire, but one of the things that's come to our attention is. With the state of Oregon with DMV, number one, they're super shorthanded, and there's federal requirements for how long it's gonna take them to report. Licensing um violations and things like that for CDL holders. And they're held to like ten days. So that's from the time that I say guilty. Until we process it, get it to the state, the state has to get it, go over it, and then send it to the particular state, their home state. Is like ten days. Um, and one of the issues is they have to have like a, I can't remember, it's like a ninety-eight percent success rate on that. They don't have to have a hundred percent, but they have to be way up there. And the state of Oregon has been way, way down. Into the forties to sixties. Um, and the feds, then what they do is they do a fine. And that goes against the federal money and that comes in, which can be up to forty million dollars. Uh, but we've learned some things. Luckily, our court has, they said we're not, not. One of the courts that are messing up on it, but in view of that, we have stepped up instead of doing our reports. Um, at the end of the week, we're doing our reports, trying to get them done daily, if not every two days, to be able to ship that stuff to DMV. One of the things that's really helped us is the fact that we have, we do ours electronically. Um, through through our court management system, and the courts that are really causing the problems are the ones that are mailing everything at. Mailing the copies of citations and and everything, and with today's mail. Um, taking three, four, or five days, especially from rural eastern Oregon.
The ten days itself.
Is really causing an issue, but um, to me, where that's kind of, I'm looking at this more globally. State of Oregon is losing forty million dollars because they're not getting it done. That means we're losing too, because we get money from the state. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're facilitating and and getting that stuff out.
Does that become a bigger issue, obviously, I mean, them being inundated with those during high harvest areas, right? High harvest times and high harvest areas like are in our area, we have. A lot of CDL potato truck drivers that are running right now, so if those. Issues come up, are they more, is it more prevalent at this time of year and? Is that, is that, is that a a roadblock for them to get it done?
I, you know, for what is, what the DMV's issue is, I'm not exactly sure, other than they're saying they're extremely shorthanded. Um, for us, I mean, yeah, we see more CDL issues during this time of year than we do other times of year. But it's, it's kind of interesting, because if you possess a CDL and you get just a. You're in your VW driving down Main Street in Hermiston and get a ticket, that goes against it. That has to be reported. Within that as well, so um, CDLs, there's been a federal um. Push to um, because of the 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 issues they can have with somebody who's driving a huge truck. Um, and accidents that can cause and everything else, there's been a huge push to make sure that all CDL people are. Back up to the professional level of driver and um. Everything else with it, so they're really pushing to make sure that everybody knows, every state knows that. This commercial driver has a speeding problem or something like that. To make the road safe.
Just traffic violations, or does it also do uh like vehicle inspection?
There, there are some little things that do not count on it, but predominantly, it's it's traffic. It's the safety. That part of the issues for speeds and accidents and and things like that nature.
You know, on the asset, because I see a lot of these potato trucks driving down the road, and the thing looks like it's ready to just to tip over in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
And that's a, that's not on the driver necessarily, other than.
Yeah.
It's more like the owner that would be.
O dot weights and measurements generally at least once, if not twice a year. Right around this time, they start setting up their portable scales and start addressing those, because um, when they're overloaded and stuff, that can be a real safety issue.
So it is our juvenile department.
Thought you did a good job.
Good morning, Commissioners, Christie Kenny with the Juvenile Department. Uh, I believe you've uh gotten my written, uh, but I'll just kind of elaborate a little bit on kind of those updates. Um, probation counselor Samantha Ramirez did attend our um, it's called EPICS, the Effective Practices. In Community Supervision Training in August. It was a three full days in Eugene. Um, this is a model, it's a evidence-based practice model. Um, the whole goal would be to ensure that when we're meeting with kids, we have. A structure. We're not just coming to chit chat and just say, it's nice to see you today and how are things going? Um, so it's a, it's a pretty structured model. That uh has a check-in, a review, an intervention and homework. Um, so we're actually teaching kids skills. Um, and hopefully getting them to redirect their behaviors. Uh, for her to complete the certification, she'll actually continue to. Uh, meet with a coach. Um, both her and I do coaching sessions. Um, we actually do recordings with the youth. Um, and say, how did it work? What can we work on? What what was good? Where could we uh maybe tweak a little bit to hopefully ensure that we're. Um, having some fidelity to the model. So she should be totally certified. Um, I think it's at the end of March, maybe beginning of April uh of next year to get that certification. Um, I know about, gosh, ten years ago, uh, I went through the the model. It's a little nerve-wracking when you have to be recorded and you have to have other people listen to. Uh, you're talking to the kids, but in the end, it really, you know, teaches us some good skills as well, so we can pass it on to the kids. Um, also attended, both she and I went to the OJDDA conference, so the Oregon Juvenile Department Directors Association Conference. Uh, it was held in Seaside uh this year. It's a two uh day conference. Um, and it is sponsored by the OJDD Association, so each county, or what we have, it broken up in. Um, we have a metro region, a southern region, a a south and and an east side region that those juvenile department directors actually. Put together a conference team and we uh work on doing that. So I believe the next conference is in Eugene next year. Um, and it's always usually around September. Um, and then finally, another update, um, Oregon Youth Authority, so OYA, they did change. Uh, some of the process when it comes to uh BRS placement, so BRS is the Behavior Rehabilitation Services, so. This would be a youth, um, I'll give you an example, a youth that may have escalated through our system, uh, whether it's. Continues to receive new charges, just isn't getting on track with what we're trying to do, and they need to be escalated to the Oregon Youth Authority. Which is state-level probation. Uh, the BRS uh authorization would be a residential-type program. Um, so there's either two tracks in OYA, there is a youth correctional facility, so if a youth had to be a direct commitment to a youth correctional facility. Or if a youth met the criteria, an Oregon Youth Authority feels that this youth would be most manageable in a residential program. Um, there are several throughout the whole state. The authorization project, the process has changed a bit to uh be a little more lengthy. So um, I feel grateful that uh when we're looking at placing a kid in Oregon Youth Authority Care. Uh, we work with the Defense Council, so a defense attorney usually gives us actually authorization ahead of time to meet with those youth. Get all of our documentation together, so if a youth rises to the level of residential, all of that paperwork has already been to OYA. So therefore, a youth would not actually have to sit in detention for any longer time than needed, because we've gotten our ducks in a row, hopefully. So uh, if we haven't had that, then unfortunately, youth may be sitting in detention a little longer than we would like, just to make sure we've gotten through those hoops, so. We just have to make sure that process is followed and we're diligent in getting that done. Otherwise, um, those would be the updates. Uh, if you have any questions.
Just sometimes I've asked you in the past, has you seen any trends around that uh? Not necessarily concerned you, but just like, they're gonna be on a concern you or?
Well, I mean, any youth that gets a referral, unfortunately, it's never a good thing, but in this, in this uh uh, in this quarter. Um, the trend actually was more thefts. Um, so overall, I wouldn't say it's, it just varies, you know, there's ebbs and flows. Um, I always try to kind of list on there without giving too much information on who the youth is. Uh, several of those were C felonies, class C felonies, in this case, were several theft ones, theft in the first degree, so they took some property that didn't. Belong to them over a thousand dollars or more, and then several of those C misdemeanors were actually F threes, so. Uh, they took property that didn't belong to them less than a a hundred dollar threshold. So that would be the trend in this quarter overall. I uh can't say, it just ebbs and flows.
Any questions?
Any other questions I can answer?
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is our planning department.
With a record, Tamara Mabat, Planning Director. Um, I submitted a written uh report, but I'll um, uh, give us some highlights. Would you pass those? Um, when I get to the water section, this, I'll explain what these cards are. Um, Monday, our new planner Clint Schumake started. Um, he's just hitting the ground running. We're really excited. Really lucky to have um, someone with that skill set to to uh step right in. Um, if you have a chance today, he's in Landon's old seat, so stop by and introduce yourself. Um, uh, let's see, in. Maybe I printed the old version here. Um, Planning Commission had an active meeting in September. Um, approved a a couple of conditional use permits for commercial trucking businesses, which is a Band-Aid fix for. Um, uh, a couple of neighborhoods, so that we don't literally run people out of business. Um, it it again is a Band-Aid. Um, and um, the Planning Commission and the landowners are aware. We're starting to see a little um. Um, advantage creep, um, people who want to make those a little longer and more expansive and. We're recommending that they toe the line. The idea is that it's a Band-Aid fix until they can find an appropriately zoned piece of property. Um, as you know, in September, the Planning Commission also, um, actually it was in August, the Planning Commission adopted a robust set of. Code amendments, and then you, the board, um unanimously approved them in September. Um, mostly Daisy is going back to make some edit changes based on feedback. Um, we hope to get those to you. Um, on the twenty-seventh or a week or so prior to the November, your November board meeting. If those amendments work, we can accept those as the second reading. If you want us to go back, of course, that's your prerogative. And we're happy to make any amendments there that you'd like. Um, we're recruiting for a boardman and an Aragon representative for the Planning Commission, so Mary Killian has resigned. And Stanley Anderson will get the end of his term. Um, so if you know of folks in the community.
So what's the process if somebody's interested? How do they?
Just contact myself or Michaela. Yeah, uh, we just, you bet. Uh, we do ask for a little something in writing, but you know, an email.
A letter of interest.
Letter of interest. Yeah, hopefully, we'll get those filled sooner rather than later. Uh, two of you know pretty well how much time it takes. We try to provide cookies and maybe pizza once or twice a year to. Thank you for all your time, but it it is a lot of work, but it's important to the county, as you know. Uh, we're making some progress with the Heritage Trail Master Plan Update. Um, that was a project Landon was leading, so I'm filling in there, because we have enough projects that we've kind of delegated. Um, with Steven's help. Steven and I went out in the field together a couple of weeks ago, and he took his GPS and we're marking the trail. And then we'll hand over that layer to JUP engineers who will add a lot of features to it. Um. He also went out many days without me, but I just got to walk one section of it during um, during um, the week. If um, it looks like mid-November, we'll have another technical advisory committee, which are, uh, include some county staff. City Boardman, City of Aragon, the two park districts, and the port. This, um, and the Army Corps of Engineers. It's really hard to get the Army Corps of Engineers to participate in those things, but it's really important, because the trail goes. Along their property. Yeah, that's really important, so we're still working at that. Um, Landon has promised to come back for a visit on a Friday where he's not working to install a couple of interpretive panels, and then. Two of them haven't been installed. We're waiting for the two um, park districts to take that, take care of that. Steven's been busy. Stephen's been busy with the drone before the winter really sets in. He and Eric went out to do some volumetric measurements of the aggregate pits, which was prompted by the audit. They wanted to know the volume and how much we have because there's a value associated with that. So he's gonna go out. He usually goes out with a buddy, so we'll probably send Clint out with him to get to know some of that area. He's got four or five more he has to shoot before the real winter hits in. He's also, Stephen's also worked with Corey Sweeney, developed a really cool tool. I could have asked him to join, but I didn't. So Corey can take GPS measurements and enter them while he's in the field and it's a way for him to monitor things because we all know how busy Corey is. And he's got some other, I don't, I can't even tell you what it is, some other new equipment that he's written out here. And he keeps it pretty, pretty busy. Eventually, we'll have to probably look at some sort of policy about entities outside of the county who want to have some either GIS or GPS or drone flying. We've, Stephen's done a few of those courtesy for the cities. You know, usually checks with me if it's a small project, take a couple hours, that's kind of a courtesy we've done. But if it's a big project, probably needs some kind of policy, which we could adopt in our fee schedule. Like, well, you know, that's gonna take forty hours. We need to probably get reimbursed. Yeah, but, and, and for one reason, we're competing with the private sector, right? Who does that? But it's such a handy tool and cities are catching on to that. The other piece Stephen didn't write about, but it really is related to water. Stephen and I, prior to the last LubGuama meeting last week, attended a working meeting with several state agencies and together, it's really Courtney Warner-Croll's idea. And I showed her some of Stephen's work. The idea is to make a story map. You've seen Stephen's story map on energy facilities and one on the Army Depot, and he did another one. To create a webpage that has all things water and nitrates in Morro County. So all of these different projects we're working on and I could talk probably for an hour of the different projects we're working on. There's a model in the Yakima Valley called Eyes Under Water. It's a great, great system. So Stephen, as time allows, is gonna work with some of the other data people, mostly from the state agencies. And he'll probably develop it and it'll probably be hosted by a state agency or maybe the county while we're still working on these research projects. But it'll have to be translated into Spanish as well. But when people ask you as elected officials or staff, so what's this project? We'll say, yeah. Yeah, yes, yes, yeah. So it'll have the LubGuama, it will have the groundwater roadmap, EPA research project. It will have the Water Advisory Committee. It'll have public health and all the work that public health and OHA is doing. It, the last is, it might be linked to the LubGuama page, which actually the port manages right now. They're the main host. That, I think that was just a generosity they gave several years ago. We'll have to find a home for it. So he loves doing those things anyway. Caitlin Kennedy is in her second or third month and has doing, doing some great work. She has six new cases and five that are closed. That's always a big bonus, a big smile to. That's the whole idea is you bring it to their attention and help them figure out a way to, to bring their property into compliance. She's also just a really great addition to the office. So talk about water. The Water Advisory Committee has one meeting left. We didn't meet in September. Hopefully at the last meeting, which will be on November fourth, we'll finalize and adopt a memo that Ronan is working on. I provide a little bit of help with that. So over the past two years, the committee has met and heard reports from all kinds of agencies and other entities and some individuals about different various water projects they work on. And then they've come up with a list of policy and project recommendations for the board. So that won't just be a list, it will have a paragraph or so explanation. And then we hope to schedule that for the board, either a work session or for adoption December fourth. And you can change it however you want. So Matt and I are still waiting to see how that, that flushes out. And then that would be the end of that contract with GSI unless the board wants to keep a technical entity such as them on retainer, which would be my preference. I think Commissioner Drago has mentioned the LubGuama. The state of Oregon issued the Oregon Nitrate Reduction Plan on September twentieth, which still not clear what the local LubGuama Committee will do. It's pretty important to keep pace with that. Commissioner Drago's the voting member and I'm his alternate. We had a meeting just last week. The state agencies, it was what, a hundred and forty pages? It was a slug. I made through it. And it's really a report on all of the existing and new work the state agencies will be doing. Not all of those entities are happy about more state involvement.
It's still, it's still not a solid plan or base for our data collection either.
That's right. I actually have a meeting next week with the EPA data collection folks, but that's not the.
That's the link that's been missing up to this point.
Yeah, so, so really, there are a lot of things that are aligning and I don't want to say anything negative about the nitrate reduction plan because the state of Oregon needed to prove to EPA that they're doing something in the basin. But there are some industries that are being much more scrutinized and that makes them nervous as business people for good reason. So more to come on that. And then the EPA grant, which we now call the Drinking Water Roadmap, the Steering Committee renamed it, and I think that's appropriate. Happy to say we got our Quality Assurance Protocol Plan approved, the QUAP. That's an academic thing. All I got to do was sign the final document, really. But they approved it and that then set the stage for the protocol for the well testing and GSI and IRZ Consulting, so they have a couple of people out of the IRZ office. Starting next week, we'll be out looking at a couple of priority areas in Morro County and one, maybe two, in Yumatala County. Those are priority areas based on a couple of factors, which the Steering Committee approved. Availability of, of existing data. So we know based on other data, we have those are, we have a pretty strong indication of high nitrate levels in neighborhoods. Proximity to a city because the purpose of the grant is to look at options to connect to public drinking water systems. They're numbered one through twelve, but that's not priority. They just started numbering from west to east. The card that we just handed out was something Steve had helped develop. It was published by the local publisher. We sent those out yesterday or day before they were dropped in the mailbox. This is, in addition to the other work we've been doing, an attempt that Matt and I had to demonstrate that we're doing direct public engagement with the West Glen neighborhood. And that's important because we have applied to use the Port of Morro's SEP, an SEP project with that five-hundred-and-eighty-ish thousand dollars. And we needed to demonstrate some public engagement. We also recorded, not the best professional work, Matt did great, but, so if you connect on.
You don't need to watch video.
Use the QR, yeah, right, exactly. If you connect to that QR code, you can take a survey. And it's really, anybody can take it, but this is really targeted at the eighty or so residents that are in West Glen or on the perimeter of West Glen. And the idea is that we can use that SEP money to, to really pay for some significant, fifty percent or higher design of a system or systems in that neighborhood. So that's in addition to the roadmap project. In terms of water, I was invited by one of the attorneys, there's myself and some state agencies tomorrow to present to, at a law conference, a panel on the LubGuama. I think that's valuable. Matt says okay. It's important to show other part of the state. They may be on one side or the other of the issue, of the work that both the county and the state is doing. So I'll be heading out there this afternoon. And let's see, the natural hazard mitigation update, very painful exercise. I know it went to you. It had errors and I again apologize for those. I asked Daisy to do a cover-to-cover edit of those and she's made comments on about a hundred pages, mostly pretty small things. So then we have to reroute it to OEM and to FEMA. If they think those changes are substantive, we may present them back to you as a re-adoption of the final edited version. And again, I apologize, we've just been shorthanded to do that kind of a thorough, a thorough edit. Some more positive news. Daisy submitted a Transportation Growth Management Grant to update our transportation system plan. It's ten or so years old. There are other parts of our comp plan that could be updated, but when you have the kind of growth we have, you need a pretty current transportation system plan. So we've had an initial meeting with that, with ODOT. We don't have to fund, they're doing resourcing, so we don't have to do the procurement or anything. Yay, I agree. I figured you'd like that one too. And we're collaborating with Eric in the Public Works Department. And then finally, we have also received funding from ODOT to do an update to the Tower Road to develop a new one, actually interchange area management plan. It's a very busy intersection. Only gonna get busier.
Deteriorating at a very rapid rate.
The intersection or the?
The overpass, the intersection, all of it, yeah.
Eric's probably mentioned this to you and I think last year when Ken, or earlier this year when Ken Patterson was here, ODOT has scheduled and funding to replace that deck. The challenge is, is to figure out rerouting.
Yes.
So we've had a couple of initial, it's a huge challenge. You can't send all those cars through. Yeah.
Or, or on Wilson or Kinsey Road.
Yeah, so.
I guess you would have to.
Yeah, I talked with a landowner out there who is at least considering maybe another option for them. And it might be submitted in combination with some other long-range planning work that might be underway. Anyway, it really does need a lot of work, you know, just short of building a whole new temporary interchange. They've, they've gotta find a place to go, so. So we will, we'll, we'll have a technical advisory committee and then a public advisory committee. The technical committee will be agency folks, county, port, the, some of those major property owners in and around that intersection. So that'll be a good project. I think we're going to start this winter, maybe before the end of the year to have our first technical advisory committee meeting. So if there's a commissioner, I don't, Commissioner Winholtz might want to be on that since you're kind of the de facto road liaison and you're also on NEACT, if you'd be interested in her. Okay, is that a yes? Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay.
And if not, Dave and I will work on the nomination for that.
Would you?
Is it the train whistle I'm hearing or the backup alarm? The bus is coming over.
It might be, yeah.
You can be a hero or a draftee.
Yeah, happy to answer any questions or?
GSI, do you, there, on their scope of work?
Good for you.
It is good. They did a good job. Now, who monitors? Do you monitor where they're at? Are they, are they on schedules? Everything looking good with them? Okay.
It was a little iffy. It was, yeah, and we get their invoices. They do this wonderful invoice system, at least from my perspective. So they'll submit an invoice about the hours worked and then show you where in their scope of work they are. It makes it easy for me to take a look at. Yeah, and, and that will, that will be with them another couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So I guess back to water again, the additional public engagement for West Glen with Willamette. Are they, are they still planning to do a open house other than this? Are they, are they, are there any plans to try and facilitate that? I know it's gonna be a huge lift, right?
So, yeah, one, one project I didn't mention, and Matt and I have been working on this together. We have two, two small grants from Business Oregon to do a preliminary engineering feasibility, just ballpark of what different options would cost. And then part of the funding the board authorized, we have an RFP to do of communications. Based on input from Willamette Partnership and our own experience, it really seems to make sense to have a third-party outside public engagement entity. Willamette Partnership did not want to take the lead on it. We work really closely with them. Just this week, they're throwing other federal funding options our way, none of which are, are easy and the one we had to finally take.
Nothing's easy in the head, Joel. And this outreach that we have right here is not the be-all and end-all of Westin. It's specifically for this SIP. Yes, I understood that. Okay, for the SEP.
SEP, yeah.
SIP, SIP, soup.
It is the SIP, SIP, soup. Yep, that's right, yeah. So that is just sort of our initial entree into it. So when we, we have an interview set up for next week, we only received one RFP. And, and if it doesn't work, we'll, we'll have to adjust.
Well, I had, after the meeting, after the last little meeting, I had some conversation with some of the CBO people. And, you know, I mean, I hope that it was, it was truthful and transparent. And I think there are some avenues that we might be able to get some help in that public engagement. They were more open to, you know, a joint type of, of a venue rather than just them being the ones who get to run the show.
Let's, let's chat.
So I'm, I'm hopeful. I'm not, I'm not fully optimistic, but I'm hopeful. I will go there. You're being realistic. Well, and you know, and some of that comes from the DEQ meeting because there was some pretty harsh comments from that section. Yes, the DEQ meeting that I did not particularly find professional at all. So that, and then I'm going to the next meeting and then having some decent conversation. I still am not optimistic, just trying to be hopeful, so.
Put you on the spot. Would you want to be, there's a few of us. Would you want to be on the interview for the RFPs? It's just one of three different times next week to select the outreach entity.
It'll be next week?
Yes.
My availability in the next three weeks is pretty skim.
Okay.
Sorry. I would. And, and, and give me the date and, because I, I can certainly, I'm making, already making, what, three trips for you, Matt, out of the mountains?
He loves me.
I'm gonna be in the mountains for the next few weeks.
It's first season, yeah.
A few trips down.
Okay. And we're gonna have that here, so that's a long trip.
Well, so, so if it, if it coincides, so is the one on Tuesday, right? It's here in Arigan. I have, yeah.
When you have time afterwards, you want to pop in and we can go calendar? Okay, perfect. And if not, it's okay.
I will try to be on that for you if I can.
I think that's great. And maybe before we make a final decision, we'll just run it by you. I'll share the proposal with you at a minimum, so.
Anything else? All right, well, thank you, Tamara.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, Sheriff's Office, we don't have a reported cut.
The Sheriff's Office report, that's been postponed until November. And the Weed Report, that'll also happen in November too.
Emergency Management, nothing there is, Steve or anybody on, on Zoom? We don't have any written reports.
Emailed out last night.
Yeah, he sent it yesterday. It looks like he might, where he is.
He's on there.
You're right, you're right.
And he's there.
Yeah, you're right. Sorry, Steve.
No worries. Good morning, good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. In the essence of time, I'll just go through some of the highlighted items here. In essence, all of those activities you're seeing is we're involved with industry. I've been doing a lot of emergency action plan reviews for both projects and industry as it relates to their plan. Mitigate fire, hazmat, depending on what their hazard is. I do want to highlight a couple of things. We just had a great working group for the Will Quick Reservoir. And there's a list of items there. I think the big takeaway on that particular working group was the notification process to us. And we were too far down the list to have any chance. And we were too far down the list to have any chance to respond, quite frankly, if there was a major breach or an issue. So those adjustments are, are taking place internally with that group. We're also in the planning stage for a tabletop exercise, which would include evacuation notifications, process, how that would look, so then we could bring that forward and, and do some practice with the rest of the community. Additionally, it's my understanding that the flood alarm has not been tested in about eight years. So we will be getting information out probably two weeks prior, lots of social media flyers, department heads, emails, et cetera, to let everybody know that we're gonna go ahead and test that system to make sure that it's still operable. We're full into the recovery phase post fires, right, unprecedented season. I know that Public Works is interfacing, we don't have a lot of other than private landowner issues or recovery dollars that would, we would qualify for. But I know that Eric is, they're trading emails right now directly on what roads were impacted, fields, fences, et cetera. So Eric, or Garrett Reeves, is the mitigation and recovery contact for the state. We had meetings last week. Fire chief, deputy chief, Eric Chick, they've been very helpful, helping liaison between homeowners in private land to identify what those needs are moving forward and how we can help them as well. For the fires, now that we're moving out of the season, we are currently collating, there's a ton of data for these two major fires. So we're collating that data to include pictures, in essence, a closeout package for the board, so you guys can have that for record and review. The Iron Ore 2-4, that is a statewide exercise, it's based on Cascadia. They do these every two years, Morrell County will participate, we wanted to participate with Aries, our HF crew, they were unable to. So we will just get in from our script and reporting process. On the east side, we want to make sure that we're involved in that, since we've been done involved in all the planning meetings. I do want to say Stephen is outstanding resource for the mapping. That helps me with these projects, identify landing zones, exactly where turbines are, how we would do evacuations, how do we get first responders in there in a case of emergency? So thanks to Stephen, Tamara, for that access and resource, so that we're now able to share what we would call shape files for those for my emergency management software, Genesis, which the state is now promoting, which is a, an outstanding, awesome tool. Interfaces with Everbridge, we can create our own zoning, does the WEA, the IPoS, it's a very comprehensive, powerful program. So we're in the early throes of developing those zones. So it won't take a village, quite frankly, like we had in the fires, we got three different agencies trying to coordinate for evacuation zones and communications with the state, so that's gonna be a good tool for us. I did put on there the CGS rehearsal, it's coming up in February. Last year was our audit year from FEMA, so for this one in, in February, we'll just be going through the same process. I can say being part of the planning on those for Eastern Oregon, they're gonna throw a loop in with regards to killing all of our standard comms ability. So interfacing with our Aries group again to offset that, and then we do need to identify the ability to provide internet service, provided our link goes down. So internet via satellite is really gonna be the key there. On a administrative note, the HVAC system was uninstalled from senior center, and that electrical cabling that you guys agreed to pay for has been stored, and it's now at Public Works. Iron Ore, I said we covered next week, starts, also have an IPoS virtual tabletop, we just completed the gas line tabletop. And then our continued outreach with industry, et cetera, and that, that's the highlights, pending any questions you may have. I'm gonna lean forward, because I have a hard time hearing the folks up front there.
They don't have anything?
No.
No questions, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Excellent, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, so, next up would be Luke.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Not a, not a whole lot in, in the world of transportation. Right this, right at this moment, the, the grants that we spoke about previously, they were submitted. Haven't heard anything back on those, it'd probably be closer to the end of the, the year, first of, first of the year before decisions and awards are made on those. As far as our, our ridership, our demand response ridership was, it held steady about where it normally is, right around the two hundred and fifty to three hundred rides a month, each month. Our fixed route service was off a little bit. I anticipate that either A, that was due to the time that it, the loop takes to make on, on the fixed route, or and people being, weather being nice enough for people to walk, because they could get there faster. We did have special service that we ran to the fairgrounds during fair. There's been a lot of positive feedback about that, so moving forward into next, next season for fair, the plan is to really promote that ahead of fair in conjunction with fair to provide that, that resource for people to be able to get down to the fairgrounds and enjoy the county fair. So the, that was one of the things that, that we had going on. Another thing that we're working on currently, it has, we have submitted application for the permits to the city of Boardman to place all of our bus stop signs, hopefully that will be forthcoming soon. Hereback on, on those, biggest thing that I think was part of their, on their end was, they wanted to have a standard for the installation of the signs, what, what that looked like. And after speaking with Carla over there, she was not sure that they had one that existed on what they wanted, what they wanted that post and the breakaway and, and how that, how all that works. They wanted to make sure they had all that ironed out. The rest of the stakeholders, cities that are, that are involved, we've spoke with those and, and gotten permission, they, they didn't need any kind of formal application or anything from us to place a sign for those. So just waiting on their, our approval to move forward in Boardman and, and then get those signs placed is, is where we're at with that. I think that, that pretty well covers up to date where we're at with our, with our transportation.
Anybody got any questions? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you. He didn't share one important, right, personal aspect, we are losing Ben this Friday. He's moving on, and so appreciate his service over the last little over two year, shy of two years. And we'll be posting for that ASAP. Well, well, good luck and your adventure.
Thank you.
Sorry to have you gone.
Missures reports online, there is attachment, council payables attachment, so I guess that concludes the department reports. Next up would be correspondents, any correspondents?
No.
Mission reports, Jeff, you wanna lead that off there?
No, last Friday was a Great, maybe Renewable Energy Association is some of the same, one of the things that I guess is more really is that two people that are applying to replace Mike McArthur as the executive director, and did a little introduction of themselves. Crete will be that there's a committee that's looking at doing the interviews. They hope to have Mike's replacement be able to be announced at the Crete Annual Meeting in November, the AOC. The, their annual meeting is the Tuesday morning of AOC, so they hope to have somebody to replace Mike. I didn't attend, but I did hear yesterday at the SWAC meeting that the Finley Buttes is looking to increase or a rate increase out there at five percent. Which, you know, will have to come before us, and I guess the concern is that, then that increases the cost of our franchise haulers being the Lernsons and what was Senatorial Disposal, but now Waste Connections. So they all come for a rate increase before now. Very recently. Yeah, and a huge one last year for Waste Connections, I don't believe the one sun really the same, but so how much interest have you got, yeah. It seems compounding. And next week the CDA has a meeting proposed, and I have a conflict, so I've asked Dave to. There's been a change, I'm sure everybody's aware that there's been a change in the makeup of the board at the CDA, so it should be a little better.
Well, I'm not gonna have to worry about it. Am I? What, what's, what's coming up at the next meeting, you already gotta do that, you gotta do a
No.
Worsen car.
No, I'll get that done. I guess what, on the CDA news, that the, they were supposed to be looking at the two ports and the CDA's attorney were looking at doing something with the evaluation process, and there are attorneys that bowed out, so there is a request for me to discuss with our attorney, and I believe Justin's email says he's gonna be here for the land use hearing, so I will share with him the email. Get his input on what he wants to do. So that's what I've got.
Let's see, I'll hit, I did, no, I went to the, Jeff had something. Forget what. Yeah, yeah, so I went to the twentieth meeting. It got super rough there, because somebody used to say they went Western on each other. And, yeah, there was yeah, anyway. Then that meeting broke up, and then we had another meeting last Friday, anyway, to start the evaluation process on Greg Smith. And so they're kind of working that through to how they're gonna do that. So I just, let's say the CDS is in, the CDA is in flux right now. So, anyway, it's gonna have to play out, see what happens there. What else? Oh, broadband, broadband's kind of run into some issues, did you sort out everything, I mean, it's such a people that have to deal with the federal government, you know, I mean, you know, well, is this a state or feds?
What was the state? Committee that kicked it out because the broadband advisory committee didn't have an audit, but they're below the threshold of the meeting. That's, that's why I understand, is that right, Dave?
Well, that's what I, I read that, read it, trying to figure out, and I can't always decipher their speak, you know.
So the broadband, Kevin's got a quiz look on his face, so it's my understanding of what I read of the email from Nick Green is that the, the broadband advisory committee for the county and the porter part of is they're under the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold, whatever, they didn't, that and, you know, they're a new entity, they didn't have a current audit. So the state broadband committee that was going to be awarding funds kicked them out of the process because they didn't have an audit. They didn't, and, and tell them ahead of time that, hey, you know, you don't have this, can we get a copy of the audit of the two sponsoring agencies or anything, they just kicked them out. So they were real ineligible to even be considered for the state funding that's initially ordered. Is that correct?
That's what I kind of deciphered, and then Nick Green, the administrators, you know, he put out, I don't know, what do you want, you go, what do you guys want to do? And I said, well, we, I think we need to have a face to face meeting, so he wanted to have one on the twenty ninth, but we have a city county port meeting then, so John and I wouldn't be able to go, well, none of us would, so at least, you know, he was gonna be over, he's from John Day, so hopefully we can get a face to face, you know, kind of get a better picture where we're at on this, I mean, I don't know, I read it, there was, there was an editorial in the Wall Street Journal about these broadband, this exact thing we're working on. They're having problems all over, they're they're problems with the funding, and, you know, I think it's, what's it called, NEI, is that what it is? Yeah, a lot of them are getting jammed up with that on the, on the grants, and so, I mean, our ducks are in a row, we got things, you know, we got our project ready, we got, we're ready to get the RFP out on that first twenty eight miles, I think, three point one million dollars.
Sixty something. Wasn't it sixty miles or something?
Sixty, oh, I see, it's the one down there by
It was going from Young Cunningham Line all down through the Willquik Valley, then up to Blake's Ranch, then out towards you.
Okay, well, that's been the one, it's been expanded then, because the original one was just the twenty eight miles of the Willer Creek, Willer Creek down there, I think, for three point five million. So this is, well, anyway, that was the original one.
I'll forward you the email that talked about the, why would it?
Is the, is the application timeline, time period closed?
Yes, for that grant funding.
Yeah.
There's another one that is gonna be submitted for, that I don't know if it's closed yet, but Nick has concerns that we'll get kicked out for the same reason.
I, I wonder I don't even want to suggest this, but I wonder if it would make better sense for one of the sponsoring entities to apply, then, and then sub, and then subgrant the funds to the consortium. Which, if it's federal dollars, that's kind of a big deal, a little bit less so with the state, but I think it's something worth exploring, just to, just to put it in your, in your back pocket as you participate in the discussions, because you better to have, have the funding with stipulations and, and, and compliance requirements than not having it all.
Oh, okay, oh, it's reporting. Been to several meetings, been to ION Agribusiness Meeting, they're always, they're always appreciative, give a report of what we're doing down there. So that's always pretty good. That's about it.
Yeah, well, we have the, had, actually had a lawnmower meeting, which we haven't had for a while, it was a good meeting, it was in Hermiston. All of the, all, most of the state agencies, a bunch of people who worked on the lawnmower committee were there. Input. Basically, the state nitrate reduction plan was the, was the focus, and I, I tried to find it and couldn't on the Morrell County website and reached out to Stephen, and he straightened me out, and, and also has changed how to get there, it's a little easier now, for sure. So I appreciate Stephen for doing that, so it is on the Morrell County website, if you're interested in reading that, one hundred and fifty-three pages of the state's plan, some interesting stuff in there, and some stuff that's a little contentious, so. Forest Service, USDA, public meeting on the, on the forest plan. We will have a meeting on twelve, two in Hattner for public. And then another one on twelve, three in Pendleton, so if you're interested in, you know, going and finding out how badly they're gonna treat us, I would recommend going, I plan to go if I can, so, yeah. And then Friday, I believe it was Friday, we had a deflection, the, the Measure One Ten deflection process for the drug re-criminalization, we did that on Friday. Sounds like Umatilla's going, they're actually in the, they're actually in the function of handing out, you know, deflection cards as needed. So basically, if you get in trouble with the police and it's just a drug issue, they can kind of qualify you on the spot there, and, and they're still gonna arrest you, but they're gonna release you with a deflection card, is what it sounds like. And you have all the information on the deflection card as to where you can And you have all the information on the deflection card as to where you can go to get help. And that will kind of be the way you get out of your, your arrest. Um, if you, you're arrested for something else, like theft or something, you're not even qualified for a deflection card. At that time, you will go to process for your, for your, for your crime. So the deflection's gotta be just a drug-related type of an issue, so. It's, it's a living, moving, breathing thing, so it could be, it can be tweaked and changed. And it's like the, the law enforcement in Morrell County is on the same page with how they're gonna operate that. And it's like it's moving forward. We're a little behind on that. Um, you know, Justin basically said it was pretty much on his shoulders. He's just been busy and hasn't gotten some of the stuff done. He's, he's gonna work real hard on getting that done, so. Anyway, so we are moving forward. We, we're supposed to be operational October first. I think we're a little behind on that, but we are in the process of getting that going forward, so. And that's all I really have right now, so.
Okay, so, and uh, before we adjourn, I would like to tell everybody that we do have a work session this afternoon, starting at one-thirty right here. It also will be on Zoom and it's about weed abatement for energy-related projects. So if uh that interests you in any way, make sure to uh.
The addition of.
Oh, and.
The addition of the ARPA fund.
Oh, the ARPA funds, yeah. But the main topic is.
Yes.
Those are the weeds, so. Do, is there any other business? Just come before the permission?